I'd like to call, let me call to order the special meeting of the Avon Board of Education. We'll get started discussing the budgets for 2020 to 2021 and I will move it over to Dr. Carnemola.
Thank you. So technically, this is a budget workshop and make you all know by now that when we're in workshop mode, I have a hard time being on this side of the table so that we can have a conversation. So that our setup is kind of odd, left it this way because we have a board meeting right after, but usually we change the way the room is set up. So that said, don't mind me, but you know that I will probably get up and come to the other side. Okay, so I have the blueprint up just because, one, I have a tie to what we'll talk about tonight because starting to talk about our priorities for next year. But the main purpose for tonight is, number one, this is the initial meeting, so we start talking about where we start on the budget. And so, to be clear about where we start, we don't engage in a full-blown rollover, meaning just take the numbers and push them forward. Because in doing that, we would stray from the strategy of our zero-budgeting mechanism, really going through the lines, thank you, and making sure that everything that we used last year, we still need to repurchase again and so forth. So some of them, though, of course, we know and we have to move forward. Things like contractual obligations, what I call the non-negotiables of the budget that we know we've already put into place. So if you look, first, let me start with the process. The process looked very similar to last year. If you come to our first page, I won't belabor the point. But the budget process is early here. And so we start early as an administrative team. The first thing that we did looked very similar to the way we changed it last year, the first year that I went through the budget with you. So we asked every building administrator and I'll say department head, meaning everyone isn't a building administrator. So Dr. Merriman, for example, from the special heading on student services angle at T.B. Fox. Dr. Voitak from the technology area. We asked everyone who is an administrator in the district to start with, look at your budget from last year, think about what we utilized in every line, and work with people in your buildings, teachers, case managers, custodians, to say, what do we need moving forward? What are our priorities this year? These are our goals as a district. What are the priorities for this budget? They had those conversations in the building. Thanks to Ms. Mashad and the financial offices, we did an even better job this year of putting in much of what we could for them at Central Office instead of leaving the school secretaries and the administrators to put in a lot of the numbers that we already had ourselves and could push in for them. So we did some of the legwork to make it easier on the building administrators. And they had their meetings and they turned in their initial numbers. The building administrators, me and the rest of the Central Office team have had several conversations since. And you'll see some of that reflected in these initial numbers even. Because I've really tried to communicate that we're not talking about a wish list, we're talking about a budget. We're talking about needs. We're talking about how does the resources that we have, whether it's people or books or programs or money, how does that speak to what our priorities are? And so you'll see some of what I'll speak about tonight doesn't necessarily have dollar amounts attached to it, at least not yet, and sometimes it may not. Because they're not necessarily additions, they're, I'd say declarations about how we utilize our resources. And so we had to have a lot of conversations again in that way. I'm going to take you to the back page and start there, just so you could see some of where we began. And there are some, if people in the audience want, there are some extra. First of all, if you look at the top on the 2021 preliminary budget summary, you see nearly a 7% increase. Everybody take a deep breath. We know that doesn't work. We're not going to come back in a month from now and still have it be a 7% increase. But we left it so that you could see where we truly began right now. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, note what I already said. We have put in, go to the bottom and look at the preliminary budget drivers. So we have a $2.4 million increase in salaries. Those are contractual obligations, number one. But number two, they reflect an increase in staffing. One, because of enrollment that we've already managed in the year that we're living in, but now we had to push forward. And two, for our student services department and our students with special needs population. This isn't a secret, I told you as many times, pointed out again tonight, more as a reminder than anything else. After we adopted the budget for the year that we're living in, we added four certified staff members into it to account for the changes in enrollment and needs primarily in the elementary schools. So you see that reflected as you push that salary number forward. We have...
Bridgette, I'm sorry, just for quick...
Yep.
20...
Stop me any time.
1920, we added four FTD.
In the year we're living in right now.
That were not originally budgeted.
That were not originally budgeted for. We did budget, knowing the enrollment was up and we had, that's on top of, we had two positions built in, one kindergarten split. One kindergarten that we split initially, even knowing more students would enroll than we had at the time. But as you know, they just kept coming after the budget was adopted. So on top of that one, we put another four staff members in. Certified staff. We've also currently have five paraprofessionals that need to be, some have been added in already, some we just have not finished the process with, but the numbers are reflected in here. There very well may be a sixth that we are discussing. That number is in here, to be safe.
So this increase in salaries includes the four additional that were not budgeted from last year?
Correct.
So the $2.4 million is $2.4 million more than was budgeted for for salaries in the current fiscal year?
It's a total, though, so some of it is increase, right, from our current employees. And then there are four certified staff members added in there, yes? And six additional non-certified.
That's all my questions. Like, if I went back and I pulled last year's budget, what we budgeted for salaries is $2.4 million less than what we currently see?
That's right.
Than what you were presenting?
That's right.
But, thank you.
So we're trying to be proactive, again, in making sure that, from a procedural standpoint, people are registering for kindergarten. But there's a lot of variables, and we've talked about that before, registering for school in general, because it wasn't only kindergarten. A lot of it has to do with when homes are selling and who buys the homes. Unfortunately, we can't control all of that. A lot of them were in the summer. A lot of them were at the beginning of the school year. And the other thing that I point out is, hello?
Hello.
The other thing I would point out is... That it's not only about numbers, it's about needs. And there are superintendents all over the United States, some giving some version of what I'm saying right now, whether it's tonight or another night, depends on where you live. The needs of our students are changing, continue to change. And we are seeing more and more students with more intense needs, particularly our younger grades. And so some of it is about the number of students that are coming. The rest is about what they're presenting us with that we need to respond to. And very oftentimes, we don't know that until they're here. So that could be because they're enrolling in pre-K, kindergarten, or because they're transferring in from elsewhere in the middle of the year. So just want to point out that, yes, the salaries are moving target to some degree, but we've instituted some procedures last year. And again, right now, as we move forward, trying to do a better job of accounting for whom we know we may need to look at additional staffing for, grade levels and students. So the benefits line, we're down to bottom in the drivers. The benefits line is an increase. And this is, some of this is news that Heather and I actually just received Thursday. So there's good news, there's really good news, and then there's really bad news. That's the short version.
You're saying it's bi-horrible?
Yes. The really good news is, from a claims perspective, we're doing well. So our health insurance and dental costs are flat. So yay, great, we shouldn't have an increase. The bad news is that that is being eaten up, and you see the increase, because the way the premiums have been calculated over the years by our former broker are not necessarily... Should I use the word accurate? Projections moving forward.
They hadn't been projected.
They hadn't been projecting forward...
Enough.
Enough. So as you know, the town moved away from using Milliman as a broker. A contract was entered into with Lockton as our insurance broker. And as a part of that, an entire analysis is done to do the projections for the coming years, not just the one year in, but for the coming years. And so what was explained to Heather and I and Mr. Medick at that meeting Thursday was that we need to phase in a plan of additional contributions to premiums over the next three years, is what we decided we'd do? Four years? Four years. So even though it would have been fantastic and we could have left this at zero, we're not going to be able to make up the $1.2 million, something around that area. $1.2 million in insurance premiums that we had been advised to put aside. Because again, remember, it's self-insurance, so it is going into our town coffers, so to speak, but it's to cover the premiums and the claims.
Just for clarity before we...
Yeah, and we'll talk more about this another night besides tonight. But I just wanted you to see why that number is higher.
So this is a service that we share, we're with the town, right?
Yep.
They're getting the same news on their side tonight or whenever they have their meeting?
Not tonight, but letting the cat out of the bag, I guess, but yeah.
Surprise!
Surprise! But we are now aware of this.
So this $1.2 million shortfall, is that an annual shortfall?
No, it's over. It's right now what they forecast us to be over time, that if we had been making changes all along, you might have seen a zero tonight. We always put something additional, just in case, to cover ourselves anyway. But you might have seen a zero. But because we've been advised that the premiums haven't kept up, we need to determine what that looks like moving forward. Right now, what it looks like is, let's put the money in. Does it mean in the future it might impact our negotiations with employees? Yes, that's a possibility. That's not what we're here to talk about tonight. Those numbers haven't been released. I can't speak to that with certainty. What I can tell you is, we need to increase the amount we are putting in to our insurance.
So this $3.41 is what's going to remediate that gap?
This year. Yep. Partially. You can add it.
Because the $1.2 million is over the next four or five years. So we're going to see this number go up for the next couple of years...
Yes.
Until we meet that shortfall.
Yes.
May I ask you a little more detail?
Yep.
Are you saying it's not cash flowing? Or are you saying the actuarial reserve has not been met? But I suspect we're cash flowing, and I've seen the town actually has put aside in previous years less than we said the same.
Correct.
Because they adopted a more rosy analysis.
Actuarially.
Actuarially, okay.
Do I add it?
Any of the underlying assumptions have any of them changed?
No.
And what's the driver for the different analysis? Is different leadership calls as roughly the same analysis?
We didn't get into it, Houston, but I'm sure they'd be more than happy to provide you their actuarially determined methods.
Excellent, I look forward to it.
I'll send the email.
And I'm sure that's going to be another conversation as we move forward. Tonight, it's, I want you to understand why the number's up. It's not about claims, it's about premiums.
So understanding that the premium projection has changed post-negotiations with our contracts. In the next four to five years, many of these contracts will come up. That number could be altered based upon employee contribution?
Could be.
Okay, I'm just...
Not entirely, though, Heather.
I'm just trying to understand what...
It would never be this number.
No, 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 no. I'm just trying to understand what are the factors that go into determining this number? Because my assumption is going to be this number is going to fluctuate year to year...
Yes.
Based upon actual projections? And what elements do we control in terms of altering that number?
The only piece that the Board of Education controls is the Board of Education versus the employee share.
Okay.
That's it, that's all you can determine. The actual premium itself...
Our share.
The cost of the plan, that is what we're talking about, right? And that is the split we're talking about.
Does this include the employee contribution?
No, no, that's only the employer...
Okay.
This is our part.
Okay.
So this is the number we're going to be counting on for the next three or four years?
This is us, yes, that's what I'm saying. This number isn't getting put off on the employees, no, could never be.
No, but I mean, on our budget, this is something we would anticipate at least.
Yes, yes.
At least.
But here's the other piece we have to be cognizant of.
Right.
So to put it out here now, again, being the bearer of bad news, this increase is based on the claims having been good. So this is to remediate this... They have been good, they have been good. We've been, those, from an actuarial standpoint, what they've projected is where we've landed. So they would have told us we would have been safe if we did not increase our insurance contribution, but for the new actuarial analysis that was done, that our premium as a whole should be higher. Not based on large claims, just that our premiums should be higher. So if next year, we have a not-as-good year from a claim standpoint, you're going to see us try and make up the premium plus a different actuarial analysis related to the claim. So it could be even higher than this.
Yeah, just to clarify, so we are self-insured. So what we should be paying is administrative fees, since we're not buying premium, because we're not insuring ourselves. So insurance goes with premium. So this isn't our fees, assuming this is stop-loss premium. And I know maybe this isn't the time where you're prepared for all that?
I think what you're saying is, in fact, the stop-loss was raised. I'm only talking about that, but you're saying that actuarially based upon claims that we have been excessively optimistic to the tune of roughly a million dollars, whatever, in terms of claims.
Well, do you think the only premium to come into a self-funded discussion is stop-loss premium?
Correct.
There's no premium for the underlying claims, because we're self-insuring. So I'm assuming this is just stop-loss premium?
No, totally different. Stop-loss premium...
Is it premium equivalent?
Is a piece of this and is completely separate. And yes, we do have a stop-loss premium, we do. And it is a totally separate account as well. This is what we're, we do have premiums that we issue per single EE1 and family. We do have a cost of a plan.
So some types are called premium equivalents. It's actually premiums, but we have to somehow get a number that looks like a premium so we can do our contribution strategy.
And that's that actuarial determined cost of the insurance plan, they call it the premium for us, even though...
Even though we're self-insured.
Correct.
But that's what they call it, yeah.
So how much can we see, how much detail can we see that Houston asked for?
The actuarial determined methodology?
Those factors.
I have no problem emailing, I would love to see it myself, actually.
We don't have that yet. But again, however, we're here, we just got this news. We're having a finance meeting, I want to bring it up. We'll talk more about the insurance piece of it, we have more information from them.
This was the agreement we made...
Last quick question, I apologize.
Yep.
Is this a set number? Because it sounds like we haven't seen the actuary tables. Is this a set number, non-negotiable, this number cannot change for this coming year?
Well, I think that we are in a discussion next two weeks of the holiday and we're really going to talk about what that set number looks like.
But this is the best projection we have right now.
That's the best.
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you, I appreciate it.
Because they don't set the number until December. So these are projections, this piece.
And also, you should know, Jeff, that this is based on certain set of assumptions. If we change the set of assumptions, you'll get a different number. The stop-loss number, by the way, has been raised through a consultant I had last year. So, and I have seen, and it is improper, people try to negotiate with their actuarial people. I would certainly not recommend that, but I know people sometimes do that. Sometimes people do not follow the recommendations of their actuary. I think that is fiscally irresponsible, not responsible, particularly in light of a personal liability for such problems. Thank you.
I have one last question, sorry.
That's fine.
So we keep saying we, when we use, I mean, who's in charge? This is not us alone, this is a...
It's all say on the town.
This is us and the town. We get together, we pick the company, we go through all this. So this is a team project, okay? Just to re... Confirm that.
And we make the determinations about how...
It's not the Board of Education, we didn't go in and say, oh, yes.
No. But we have the rules to follow, so to speak, about how to fund it properly and how to split it between the town and the Board, most of which is based on use and number of folks that are insured. Okay. Utilities, see an increase there. Those are our projections based on use. Transportation, increase in our busing contract, yes? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Busing contract, back to contracted services. Sorry.
It's okay.
Contracted services, remember, and we'll do this again when we're in the next budget meeting, but a lot of things fall into this category, mostly is services related to students. So, for example, yeah, I could need an outside evaluation performed as the case manager, specialty director of a student. That goes into contracted services. Could need nursing services outside of the ones we provide for a student. Those would be in contracted services. This is a, it's a line that there's a lot in, the $21,000 that we're talking about here. And again, tonight's not the dig in line by line, these are the projections.
So obviously, the student service and student center services are essential and really non-negotiable. But could we expect to see more detail on some of the things like KELLY services, legal services, leasing?
Yes.
And some of the other items?
So what we're talking about tonight, and I think you weren't here when I started, big picture, just knowing some of the obligations we have, moving them forward, one. And two, some of the projections. And three, how do we align our resources to what it is we're trying to do as a district? The next piece I want to talk about, which I think is actually the most important piece tonight, this is just, I wanted you to see the starting point for us. Because the starting point for us is a great... So we talk about starting at nearly a 7% increase to last year's budget based on the current needs of the district that are mostly non-negotiable. We're talking about the staff that we currently have working with students and the projected staff that we need to work with students and the programs that we already have in place. That's what the 7% increase reflects. This is not adding anything else in. So we've been working quite a bit behind the scenes already, trying to look for efficiencies in those lines because clearly there are other things that we need to keep moving forward. So how much of it is reallocation versus add-on? And that, that's the point we're starting with. So tuition, those are primarily for our students who are outplaced. Some of that is magnet tuition that we project forward. We are not paying tremendous amount in magnet tuition right now. That's, we've had a lot of kids come back to district, we've had those conversations already. We'll break those numbers out. This is our projection primarily related to outplaced tuition itself. So note that the number that I'm talking about down below is what matches the middle number. I told you we started at 7%. We've already gone through, as we come here tonight, and made some reductions where we could, knowing that we've already purchased X, we're not going to purchase it again Y next year. We've gone back and forth with principals, they went back over their own budgets, they did tremendous amount of work, people in their buildings and then with us. And so as we sit here tonight, we are at a 5.57% increase over last year. Is that going to work for us moving forward? No, I think we all know the answer to that is most likely not. So we're going to have decisions to make along the way, but we are still working hard at what that looks like and how we reallocate some of the resources we have already. So the story isn't over, but I need you to know where we are because we're taking a hard look at anything that we would talk about adding in. And you can see why. That said, we can go back to these numbers. But I want to come back to what I think is most important when we're talking about the budget, which is what's tied back what we are talking about and what we need into the priorities that we're setting for 2021 and really beyond. Because as you know, we're looking at a three-year plan. Five, could land in a five-year plan, based on starting in '18. So we broke this out like we did last year into the focus areas for our goals. This is not an exhaustive list of the things that we are doing, but these are highlights that, as we come tonight, we see as the non-negotiables moving forward for us to be able to keep making improvements and progress and being innovative. So let me just kind of take you down the list, I know you can read, so I will just add some information in. So the first one we're talking about under student learning, a library media specialist. As we have increased the number of students in our elementary schools and also increased what it looks like for them to utilize the library for the Makerspaces, for enrichment programming, which also services, as we were talking about at our last meeting, pieces of adult enrichment for all the students, our talented and gifted students who are doing some of the work through the Makerspaces and some of the programs that we invest in in our libraries. This is a focus to have another person that we can split between Roy Brook and Pine Grove. From a contractual standpoint, we need another person there to do it because the groups of students are too large now, particularly in certain sections at K and 1 because of the increase in students. So we have large numbers of students going through the library media center. And for the record, publicly, I think we have to make sure everyone understands the redefined version of the library. This isn't the library that I went to as a student, and many of you probably went to as a student, where I just went, checked out my book and I had to be quiet and I left, or I sat down and I read, or maybe I got tossed out of the library. Our library media centers are learning spaces for our students. They go, they, they're there, they're a part of their regular schedule rotation. This is where they do research, even our youngest students. This is where they do research, this is where they get enrichment, this is where they learn how to use additional pieces of technology. So they have to go through the spaces as a part of their schedule. They need supervision and instruction as part of their schedule. Our library media specialists are instructing these students when they are in these spaces. So if we don't have enough people, we can't provide the proper instruction or supervision. So that is number one. At the high school, you know that we have a personal finance course as a graduation requirement. The state had said years ago that would be a graduation requirement. The state has gone back and forth lots of times on what they consider graduation requirements at this point. Luckily for us, that was the one we moved ahead with. I think we will see that come back around. It's in the best interest of students regardless, it's still going here. But to be able to run that... here, but to be able to run that successfully and also be able to have the number of math courses that we need to run here at the high school, we're looking for a person who we can split between business and math. As you know, we've, there are some courses that we have not allowed to run the last couple of years as a result of the staffing. We've made it work for students by not, by rotating the courses that were offered. So for example, if I was a freshman who wanted to take the class that was already full and we couldn't open up another section because we had no more teachers to teach it, then I got told as the freshman I couldn't take the class. We made sure the juniors and seniors who had never taken the class took the class. For the most part, that has worked, but it doesn't allow enough of the opportunities for the students moving forward. And when we start talking about business education, this is another example of where I would say, this isn't, they're going through and they're learning how to type in 2019. This is considered part of the career and technical education path, which is part of what we are required to do with the state. It's not about vocational training. It's about ensuring that we give kids, students 21st century skills, some of which in the technology areas include business skills. So ideally, this is a person who has certified math and can teach business also, and we do think we can find that person. English language arts, so this is not necessarily a dollar amount attached to this right now, but this is a priority, because we are, we have been looking entirely pre-K-12 at what our vision for reading and language arts is. And whether or not we needed to make changes there programmatically, at this point, I think we know we need to make changes there programmatically to keep up with 21st, 22nd century, I think Dr. Wojtek would say, if he was here with me. But I don't have something to bring you tonight to say, this is how we're going to spend the money, or it's this amount of money, because that's where we're still working, making sure that we've done our homework and our research about how to move forward. Do I expect that that's going to be an exorbitant amount of money, or several additional staff members? No. I put it here because I want it to be clear that you will see, most likely, some programmatic changes that might have dollar amounts attached to them as we move forward. They don't necessarily mean they're additions. So a good example is, we spent a lot of money, if you remember, in the last two years of the budget, increasing our classroom libraries from K through 6. Mostly 1 through 6. So we have that money from English language arts in our line right now. Will we need to buy all of those books again? No. So we've reduced some of those lines right now. Again, we'll talk to numbers when I can bring that with the other pieces. But we know we're going to have to reallocate some of that money that we don't need to do those libraries again, to perhaps, for example, some training and professional development if we decided to go for a different method of teaching English language arts. So I bring it up so that you know if you see it. Enrichment and talented and gifted. And I put those together because, again, I think we have to be clear from our common understanding and messaging standpoint, that we are talking in many ways about the same thing here in Avon, when we're talking about enrichment. Whether or not we have instituted it entirely across the district at this point, that's a different conversation. But many years ago, we talked about this in the retreat that we had to develop our goals, we've talked about this in some of our curriculum professional practices committees, we made a decision in Avon to go with what the newest model for talented and gifted education is, was then and still is now. The Ranzilli model of enrichment is that. So, we ventured down a path maybe five years ago, six years ago? Sometimes it feels like dog ears. Sorry. Before my time, that's what I do know, of instituting enrichment for all and the enrichment cluster idea, and starting to change some of our spaces, such as maker spaces and some of the programming. We then hired, as you know, an enrichment coach that works between central office and schools. We still have work to do in moving forward from an enrichment for all standpoint, meaning every student deserves to have enrichment differentiated to his or her level, and being more clear about when we're doing it for all students, including those that we have identified as talented and gifted. Because I think we, we do a lot of that, but we don't necessarily communicate about what that looks like as well as we could. And that's some of the conversation we've already had, one. Two, when you see here the OLSAT, remember we spoke about this at the, at the board retreat? That is a standardized test to, that has been around for a long time, that most school districts, including Avon, use as the baseline for determining identification of a talented and gifted student. One of the things we talked about in our board retreat was whether or not we wanted to make a decision to reevaluate our identification process, and instead of limiting which students took the test based on what other criteria they may or may not meet, should we do what some other districts do and test every one of our students in a particular grade level? And as I mentioned to you at that board retreat, but I'll say again as a refresher and for the audience that we're in now, generally speaking, you do that sometime around third grade. The test is a norm reference test. You can buy it from the company for different grade levels. If you had a student who was a kindergartner that you had, you had an idea might qualify as a talented and gifted student, and that happens sometimes, you could buy this test, one test, one student, and make that determination. That said, as I said to the retreat, I would never make the recommendation that we tested all kindergarten students, and neither would the testing company or general best practice, because students, generally speaking, will do better on it after they've had some experience at school. So you do it still when they're young enough that you can provide the interventions, but you've given them enough time to have a baseline at school. So what we are proposing, hello, now we're in the workshop model. I can't stand sitting back there. I have to be out here. Part of my pacing and processing, is that we would, moving forward, give that to all of our third graders. Now to be clear, again, for the audience that we're in now, because we spoke about this once already, we would do that so that we leveled a playing field in identifying the students. That isn't unusual. There are many districts that do it. We are making the recommendation, you can see that here tonight by having this conversation, because that does have a price tag associated with it. It's approximately $10 per student, the test. So, we have a budgetary implication there. So based on, if we're looking at this year's second graders, for example, I think that's what I asked you to look at for a number. First, we took first as right here. So, I didn't attach dollar amounts to any of this, but you get the idea. Yes. Yes, sir. Yes.
Why third grade? Let me tell you why I asked the question.
Go ahead.
Because it's unfair to you.
Okay.
The U.S. District of Course for the Western District of Washington did an analysis to see if they could pick out people with predilection for criminal activity, and part of it builds up because they're frustrated. Their predictor was how they're doing in third grade, and that was their best predictor, in which case I would say, third grade's too late. Maybe you should do second. I thought that was just an interesting comment by the board administrator, but that's, that's what they're doing.
Okay. That's interesting. I haven't read the research. What I would say to you though is, to remember something, we're not at a curriculum professional practices committee meeting. I appreciate, no, no, it's, I'm going down the same path, so I just want to bring us back to center and say, what I'm saying to you right now is, I am basing that on a third grade administration. Is that said in stone? No. What I'm telling you is that we do want to recommend that we are testing all of the students at, in elementary school. I will tell you that a vast majority of districts do it either in third or fourth grade.
Is it $10 a kid or are they the same grade?
Yes.
So budgetary, it doesn't really matter?
Doesn't really matter. Just because the numbers are going to fluctuate every year, how many students are in...
If we're not doing a formalized program for gifted and talented, why bother even testing?
Well, first of all, we have a requirement, and we are doing a formalized program, but it's in a wider definition of programming. It's part of what we need to talk about. So, by law, number one, you have to do it. You do have, you have to have a process for identification, and you have to identify and notify students. That's all the law requires you to do. I mean, students, excuse me, parents, students if they're 18 or older. That's it. So, everyone needs that standard because they have to. I would say, there are a lot of districts out there that don't have a formalized gifted and talented program. It is something over the years that, depending on where you were when, by the wayside, a lot, a lot of times due to financial issues, but also because the methodology for what to implement when students were identified has changed over the years, what is seen as the best practice. So when I rewind back to, we're talking about the Ranzilli model, which is a well-known national model out of UConn, is enrichment for all. So for example, I think I told you this, and I think some of you may have been in the same situation once I predicted. During the time that I went through school and that many of you went through school, if you were identified as talented and gifted, you left your classroom at least some amount of the time. You usually got pulled out of something else. I think I missed a whole lot of art class, which didn't really matter to me, because I'm a terrible artist and they weren't going to get me any better. But they pulled you out of somewhere else that you belonged and sent you to this room, you and whoever else, you know, the three or four other students in your grade that were identified as gifted and talented, and you worked on whatever you worked on with, with a pull-out sort of teacher, usually a special education teacher who had a certification that leaned toward gifted and talented. Not always. You don't, you don't really have to do that. So it depends, depended, I should say. The models that, the model that we are implementing, not fully, and those are some of the conversations we've had already, that we need to move forward about, and that's just because we're still somewhat in, not infancy, but in, I'd say, middle-aged years of implementing the enrichment for all across the board, because we only started a few years ago. So, I bring it up again tonight because, one, this is an example of where we will put some additional funds into the budget, because I want to make sure, we want to make sure from the conversations that we've had and with our community and our teachers, that we have a method for properly identifying the students that doesn't disqualify anyone, for example, because they didn't do well on some other tests. Because a talented and gifted measurement is primarily about what a student has the potential to do, which is what this OLSAT measures. So, yes, we put that in the budget. We talked to you about the possibility of doing that at the retreat. I just wanted to put it out here publicly. That's only a piece of this though, so we need to put that into the budget, and we need to continue funding the enrichment for all program that we already have, which includes many things that are geared for talented and gifted students. And an example of that, like we talked about, is math counts, stock market game that we play, some of the coding exercises that, that we do in, primarily in our library media specialists. But what I want to be clear about is, though we're identifying talented and gifted students and working with them in, in these ways, what we have not done, and I would not want to see us do, and I think we all agree with this, is be exclusionary about it in the sense that this is where we talk about enrichment for all. So, if you've been identified as talented and gifted, and we develop a, a plan for you with your teachers and our enrichment coach, for example, from central office, that this is some of what we need to do for you to propel you forward. You're a student, Jenny, I'm sure you were a student, who would have probably done very well at math counts. So that's what we're, that's what we're doing for you. It shouldn't mean that if Bridget, who's not been identified as talented and gifted, can't participate in math counts if she wants to and her, and her parents want to allow that.
We have no staff that is trained specifically on gifted and talented, provide the supports to the teachers to make sure that those gifted and talented students' needs are met.
So we have our enrichment coach.
Which is not certified and gifted and talented, correct?
She is not.
Okay.
The primary place this falls under, from a district perspective, is the office of student services. Part of, I think, what's happened with our discussions around identification is we've had a number of different people come, in both of those roles, come through this office. And so, as we've had many conversations here in public, and you've asked me a number of times to get a handle on what was going on and what we were versus we're not doing, that has been very difficult in some regards, because we have not had some stationary people. Luckily, we've had the principals that we were able to go back to and rely on for what some of this has looked like over time. But to your point, Jeff, so when I talk about continuing to fund enrichment, that also, in some ways, looks like continued professional development on what to do with our students that need enrichment, not just continued professional development for students who need remediation. I think we've already done a good job of that in the way that we've implemented our, our tiered intervention system, but we do still have more work to do. And that's the reason, for one, that this board approved, I think this is the first budget that I was here for, that you put together just prior to my time, putting this enrichment coach in. And though she's not certified and talented, I mean, in special education, she has a background in enrichment and in working with students and curriculum more than anything else, and teachers that look that way. So, some of it may be about utilizing that position differently, and we're having some of those conversations, not, not for tonight, but there's some different moving pieces here. But from the funding angle, one, the recommendation is to do the testing, and two, it's to continue funding what we're already funding and continue looking for some other opportunities for students who need more enrichment.
So can I clarify the specifics of what you said? So I think, so we've been searching for a specific program for those who are identified by that test. So that's a legal status. That group is named and specific, gifted and talented. So it sounds like the future plan is, once you're identified, you develop a plan specific to that student with the enrichment specialist and the teachers. So each of those students will have that intervention, essentially.
So I think...
Is that the proposed specific plan? Because I know we've been searching for a specific plan for, for many years we've talked about this.
So, to, what I will say is, to some degree, that happens already. It's not as formalized, I think, as we, as we would want to see it. And so, yes, we need to firm up what it looks like to provide the enrichment for our students who are identified.
Let me ask you a routine question. If I were to say, give me an enrichment student's name, gifted and talented.
Houston.
Technically, I'm not. There you go. Was never identified as a student. And I go to their folder, I can pull out the enrichment plan. See, I don't think we have one, because it's not there.
So...
That's what worries me.
So, I would disagree.
Okay.
Because to say you're pulling, we're wordsmithing though. We collect data about our students through various measures. Students have, parents, yeah, teachers have access to that data. Oftentimes, they are part of who helps us to input it. We've now, as a result of our conversations and trying to get better at this process, ensured that teachers could not only see the scores and so forth of students, if they have the talented and gifted identification, it's, it's in power school now, in a visible space that any of their teachers can see it. That had not been the case.
But that's data. So, first question is...
You're talking about the plan. I'm getting there.
The plan.
Getting there.
And then is the plan communicated to the students in there?
So, this is the part where I'm saying, do we, do we do it consistently? Have I found that over these years? And that's what I'm saying. The answer is no. It is for some that we have, for example, moving ahead in your math course, and we've had those kinds of conversations, and the plan primarily for you, because most of where you are talented and gifted is in math. I know this is not true necessarily.
It is in fact not true.
I said necessarily, but, but we've had those conversations with you and with your parent, yes. I, to be clear, I don't want, what I don't want my principals to leave with tonight, or, or any of the, the teachers or staff that are here to leave and say, oh my goodness, did she go to the budget meeting tonight and say that we're about to have a, an IEP for every student who's labeled as talented and gifted? That is not what I'm saying. That is not the requirement. That would be difficult to manage. It's not necess- but a plan, yes.
I understand that the question is.
No, I just wanted to be clear before we left, but something else.
And I'm not going so far as to say IEP, but I'm saying, you know, when a student or a parent goes home, they have a piece of paper to clutch.
We know what we're doing, yes. We know what we're doing. Because that they, that they know what we're doing.
They know what we're doing.
We, all of us. I'm, I'm talking collectively, parents and the school and the teachers. Yes. Because the other piece of that is, if we are going to change the programming at all for that student, for example, you are going to leave sixth grade and you're going to go to seventh grade math, we have to make sure our parents are on board with that. Some are not, regardless of whether or not the student has qualified to do that. Or if we are going to say, you know, we want to give you this additional time to work on coding. You might have, the time of the day that we might be able to make that work right away for you is when you're normally in string lessons. That's not ideal. Sometimes that might be what happened. We would, we would need to have a conversation. Those are the kind of things that we already do. But I don't think that we do them with fidelity wide scale. And that's what we're talking about, moving forward, changing.
Since it is, this is a special education notation, right?
I mean. Yes.
Gifted and talented is a special education.
It's under that umbrella, right? It's under that umbrella.
So I guess I wonder when we say, why the student wouldn't have an individualized education plan?
It's not a special education designation by law. I'm saying, when I say it falls under those jurisdictions, I'm saying generally speaking in a school district. That is the portion of the district that manages the overarching program.
So the, the challenge that we have faced is that we haven't found the happy medium between a full IEP and identifying the student as to what Houston is saying, like an actual folder, like for a sit-down meeting where you say, oh, Houston's supposed to be at math counts? Or, you know, is that what we're trying to kind of find a tangible?
Yes, we're trying to find a tangible way to have these conversations, to put things into place that we're clear about why they are in place. It's not just that you are going to do this extra thing. Your parents need to be notified, your teachers need to be notified. We need to have some conversations about what it looks like for you to get the enrichment that you need, and then move forward, move forward with the plan. Do we do that already? Yes. Do we do it in a wide-scale way that we would want to be able to pull it out? No. There are people that I think would say, yes, that, you know, I've had those kinds of conversations, and I understand why they're doing what they're doing in the school district for my daughter and my son. Yes, you would find that. Would you find it wide-scale? No. You, you would definitely find a parent who raises their hand and says, wait a minute. I think I got a notification that my student was talented and gifted, and I'm not sure what that means or what they're doing about it.
That actually goes on public record in the curriculum meeting. So I agree with your assessment of the situation, because we had someone speak for the public.
Yeah.
That they were identified on the.
At this point, I would think it's, I would settle for just consistency and transparency in the process and distribution of the information in a reliable format. It could be well short of an IEP and still get that job done.
That's where we are right now.
We're talking, we're talking the same. We're talking about the notification, we're talking about the plan.
Right, the plan itself.
What is the education.
We're talking about how do we plan for their students.
Right, but it could, that could still be done short of an IEP, and it would be less burdensome. Just getting it done and getting it done consistently would be an improvement over where we are.
You are saying exactly what, what I'm saying.
There we go.
That's, that and testing all of the students to make sure we're properly identifying them and giving them the opportunity to be identified is what I'm talking about tonight.
Just to tie a bow around it, so my understanding is now that we are committing, or you're proposing that we commit, once the students identify, that we provide a plan, the words we're using, for that student. Every, every time. And whether or not the plan gets followed depends on the parents', decisions, child, whatever that may be. But we are committing to offer a plan for that, for each of those students who are identified.
I don't think this is the meeting to commit to that from a technical standpoint.
Okay. Or proposing to commit, yeah.
Or re-budgeting for it.
Right. And so I am, that's, that's what I am talking about. I am making assumptions that this is the way we will move forward based on the budget. We will have these conversations again, because we'll be together again as curriculum professional practices committee, maybe need to move things forward to the board if they need approval, for example. And I am saying to you, though, from a budgetary standpoint, this is how I envision us moving forward, and we are talking the same way.
And that's, and add to that, that's an enhancement to what we currently have, or it's not a consistent approach.
Yes.
Right. Consistency would go a long way towards making a lot of people happier.
Right. Usually does. We do, we do what we say we're going to do, and we say what we're.
Everything on here is listed in this 5.57 number.
No. So let's be clear again. These are the priorities. If we need to make additions to the budget, we're going to have to have that conversation. If we're going to reallocate, and this is where, see, behind the scenes, we're still doing that to bring that forward to you at the next workshop. We're going to reallocate some of the funds we're already using on X to spend on Y. That's our preference, so that we don't get any higher than this number. So these are the numbers without any additions in them. But I, I want to be clear about that because you see how far above where we are going to need the land we are and the tremendous amount of work that, that we still have to do. We've already come from 7% to 5.57. You see how hard we've worked already. It's millions of dollars that, that we've reduced before we came here tonight. But I just want you to know that because there's not a lot of room for adding a lot of things.
Let me ask you.
Yes.
A couple of questions. Forgive me as I get into more of these.
Sorry, I just. We're running out of time because we have to start the board meeting, and I want to tell you two more things, so go ahead.
Okay. Do you have anything in Power School or any software package that will currently do a rough first cut for this kind of thing? Or is this still where everybody needs to sit down and say, I've got X number of students, and they have to manuscript it out themselves?
Are you talking about talented and gifted?
Yes.
Do you mean from the plan standpoint?
Yeah.
No, but, not in Power School, but in how we use our, our Google Docs suite, yes. And I know, I don't like, never mind, I'm not going to get into that. We do have, we have the mechanisms in place technologically already, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Power School is just.
We'll have to have a separate conversation because I'm sorry, Google Docs is not an answer.
Powerhouse, yeah, Powerhouse, no, I'm saying. Power School is a clearinghouse for data primarily, so no, they couldn't do a plan in it.
But you can still, IEPs in 504 is in Power School.
You can connect them through the IEP in 504. They're not truly completely in there here. There's a flag and there's a link, yes.
So I think to Houston's answer, though, there is a mechanism.
If you were connecting it to the IEP system, yes.
Which we don't currently do.
No. We, no, we do. Our IEPs are connected to Power School, which are separate entities, but they talk to each other.
So all I know is when I go in, as my own, my own district, which is not Avon, I go into Power School, bottom-left corner, I can download every IEP in 504 for every student in my class.
And I'm saying, we can do that.
And I think to Houston's question, could we use that same process for a plan?
We could, so, and so I want to be clear, my, I, I understand what you're asking me. My answer is not exactly what's already there, because we wouldn't want to put them into the IEP system.
Okay.
But if there was another plugin that could be leveraged possibly, so that's a conversation for another time. But not the way it currently exists, no.
All right, so the answer is it's not currently possible.
Not currently possible.
So it would be capital expenditure if you required that to be available.
Depending on what it looks like, how large it would be as a plugin, yes. To, but yes, we could talk, yes.
It's expenditure.
Yes, good business. Yep, good business. Down in the bottom, so Portrait of the Graduate, you saw, we started that already. I want to put it in because I want everyone to understand, yes, there, we, there will be costs associated with carrying out this process. It's, it's necessary. It's where we are in the work, number one, pushing our plan forward. And number two, when we come toward the end of the road, we are going to want to be able to publicize where we are with this Portrait of the Graduate and how we're moving forward. There will be some amount of money associated with that. I don't know what that would look like right now, so I'm just putting it out there. Some of these, again, remember I said they're, they may be net zero, but I think it's important, we're talking about budget and resources, to bring them up to you anyway. So down below, electronic communications. We're still looking to streamline our website. We've been spending a lot of time and energy on that. As you know, I inherited us moving that over, and we've been working with it ever since. We are looking at possibilities for mobile apps and, and to get further into the century that we live in with some of the way that we communicate with, with parents, for example. I'm not seeing that that will be an addition, but maybe a change in the way we utilize our technology funds. Some of the, for example, for some updates to school messenger, text messaging, sends out to parents, mobile apps for Avon Public Schools, that sort of thing. I'm not seeing this as a huge expenditure, just maybe a most likely reallocation of some of what we already have in our technology lines. We're going to continue our annual acquisition of Chromebooks. That's the lease that we are going to continue with under our systems. That'd be the same dollar amount, we were just moving it forward. And under talent management, this is something right now that is not costing us anything at present, but we have a, a membership at the fairly new TeachCT to engage in some longer-range talent management and recruitment, particularly of minority and underrepresented faculty and staff members, which is a statewide initiative also. So again, there's not a cost associated presently with that, but it's important to talk about because it moves those schools forward. Someday, there might be a cost. Any questions have, any questions about that? Any of that that we didn't hear?
Quick question.
Yes.
So the only staff addition I've seen outlined so far is approximately the 1.7 plus the four that were not originally in the initial budget. Do you anticipate additional staff beyond the almost six?
Do I think it's possible?
In the budget, you're going to be presented to us in, in a couple weeks.
I don't anticipate it right now. But we are, as I mentioned, looking very carefully at the way that we have our scheduling in some of our buildings, in all of our buildings, and the support services that we're providing to students to ensure that we're giving them what they need. And if that means that we are going to need to add additional personnel in after the fact, I will be still bringing that forward. I, I want to make sure we have a, a very, as accurate of a projection as we can, particularly from student services. That's, that's where I'm, so it's not that I'm not, don't want to answer the question. It's I don't know right now until a few more things are done if we're going to land exactly where we are.
I just, I, my concern would be, because I've seen it with previous superintendents, staff added well after the budget process, and all of a sudden, we present a budget to the town, the town votes, and then all of a sudden, well, now we have all these extra students in the seats, and we have to now spend and hire five additional teachers. Special ed separately, because I understand the legal stuff, I would appreciate if we could get as honest as a projection, as true as a projection as possible, understanding that, you know what? All of a sudden, 300 families move into town, but.
We manage what we manage, but no, but you, that's the reason I brought you only when I brought you, because at present, what we are looking at is, okay, there are some bubbles of stu-, you know, years of students where we might have to move staff to account for that, but right now, right now, the answer is no. And as you know, if you're trying to keep a budget number down and reasonable, adding faculty and staff in is not the way to do that. And so we're, we're trying to meet our needs and being cognizant of that at the same time. We might need to do some reallocating of folks that we have.
I just would rather proceed forward with a budget that's realistic, even if that, we know that number is going to be a scary number.
We'd rather put it in. Yes, we'd rather account for it. And that, that is the budget we brought last year. We just ended up even past that, we are.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
I want to thank Dr. Karen Mola, and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this special meeting budget workshop. Houston moves, so I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie Allen-Faver.
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll take a five-minute break and return at 7:10 to begin our regular budget meeting. And I'd like to call to order the meeting, the monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education. If everyone will please stand with me to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to have a nice, large audience. I always like to start our meetings by reading the mission statement, so it reminds us what we're all doing here together and what our purpose truly is. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. So we like to start with our Avon Achievers. I'm going to invite forward, Jason Indemico is going to represent the board, and if Mr. Duffy would like to come forward, please, and present your Avon Achievers.
All right. I am here to present Avon Achievers, our four ladies in our kitchen who do a tremendous job every single day serving, cooking, and taking care of the students as they come through for their lunches. They're an integral part of our team. I had the opportunity to serve Thanksgiving lunch just last week and realized just how much it took to stand there and take individual orders for two hours on your feet. It's really, can be a tough job, especially on Thanksgiving. And they, they did warn me, they said, we're not wearing our hairnets tonight, so you might not recognize me. They are all set. I, I do want to congratulate them for the great job they do every single day. Kim Burge, come on up, Kristiana Cabrera. And I'd also like to say that there are also educators. Every day, the students come up and get their food, and there's a sign out in front saying how many calories are healthy choices, and a little bit to educate the students about what they're eating, so. Additional educators at our school as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Before you sit down completely, I want to thank you as well on behalf of the board. Very proud of the fact that we cook our food for our students, and I know that was a learning curve for everybody to jump in, but you've embraced it, and we appreciate that you put your love into it so that when our kids aren't with us, we know that you're taking care of them. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Now I think we have a really great segue here, talking about Stop Hunger. We have our first LEGO League robotics team that's going to present for us. And so if you are willing to stay and watch the skit, I think you might enjoy it yourselves. So I'd like to welcome you forward.
They're okay. They're okay, they're okay, they're okay.
It's fine, it's all right. It'll be on TV.
Yes, yes.
And we can, we can move out of the.
Yeah, we can move it, see.
Good evening. Thank you for having our team, the Avon Lemonheads, here tonight to share our presentation. This is our first year competing in the First LEGO League Robotics Team, and we are very excited to compete this Saturday, November 23rd, at Shelton High School. The First LEGO League program has three elements. A robot, a robotic component where we designed a robot and have to complete as many missions as possible in two and a half minutes. An innovation research project where our team has had to pick a world or community problem to study and try to improve. We study hunger, and you will hear our presentation shortly. Finally, we have to compete in a teamwork instinct challenge that day and where we demonstrate the six core values of First LEGO League Robotics. We can share those with you also. Let's introduce ourselves and let then get started. Hi, I'm Lauren Teton. I'm in sixth grade on the green team at TBS.
I'm Rohan Ganesh, in sixth grade, in green team in TBS.
Hi, I'm Sydney Jones, on the blue bees at AMS.
Hi, I'm Naveen Nachy Alten. I'm in fifth grade on the red team in TBS.
We are the Avon Lemonheads, and we are a group of fifth to sixth graders. We are very excited to be here in our first year competing in First LEGO League. We focused on hunger for our innovation.
We are here to help educate and share some ideas that we have to support our neighbors and friends who face food insecurity.
In addition, Food Share has generously given us permission to use a portion of their $1,000 to spread the word in our community using social media.
First up, we are going to educate you about Meal Connect. Meal Connect is a Feeding America app that food banks and stores across America use to efficiently communicate with donors, manage pickups, and help connect with agencies to get food quickly to the people who need it.
Hi, I'm a Big Y employee. I have 10 boxes of apples and I can't sell them. Time to donate them to people in need. Let me get out my handy iPad. Now I will enter into Meal Connect. Date, ready. How many? Location, got it.
Hi, I'm a Food Share volunteer. Ding, I just got a notification from Meal Connect. Meal Connect says that 10 boxes of apples at Big Y are ready for pickup. Let me go pick it up. Yes, Big Y, thank you for your donations.
Hi, I'm a Food Share employee. Thank you for picking this up at Big Y for us. I will make sure that this gets to one of the Food Share mobile trucks. I'm busy stocking up fresh vegetables and fruits onto our mobile trucks.
Hi, I'm the Food Share mobile driver.
Hello, this is my first time visiting a Food Share mobile truck. How does this work? How often does the truck come here, and how much food can I take?
We visit our friends in Avon twice per month, but visit our friends in Farmington Valley every week. We have, you can take, there is no limit, you can take as much as you like. Like, and thanks for visiting, and see you again really soon.
One way to educate about Food Share is by hanging up these Captain Meal Connect posters around your community. Hopefully, at libraries, senior centers, apartment complexes, our schools, post offices, in more locations, we can help inform our community about the services available to help.
We also encourage volunteers. We are two young butter siblings and family members who are 12 and up can all help at Food Share. Teens 12 and up can help sort food and make a huge difference in their community. Adults can do pickups and with some brief training, deliver food in a safe and healthy condition to Food Share for sorting, packaging, and eventually delivery to agencies and people to use. Log on to foodshare.org to find out more about volunteer opportunities.
Next, we asked the second food expert, the lunch ladies who prepare our healthy and tasty meals every day. We prepared a written survey, and they reported back useful information on hunger and food waste in our Avon schools.
After lunch shifts end every day, the cafeteria staff has to throw away the uneaten hot meals or entrees of the day. Daily, this range from 10 to 25 meals per Avon school, times five schools. The grand total is over 100 eaten meals, uneaten meals, on average, thrown away every school day, just in Avon alone. Across America, schools waste an estimated $5 million a day in uneaten food.
We also did some data collection on the habits of our classmates. Sadly, counted half to completely full trays of food just dumped into garbage cans at the end of each lunch shift. Elementary students dumped on average five trays per lunch shift to about 22 trays for lunch shift to middle schoolers. On average, 75 to 100 trays are dumped right into the garbage can every day by Avon students.
We have come up with a few cost-effective ideas of how we can make a real difference at our schools in Avon. We proposed a sharing-as-carrying table right near the garbage cans. You can put any fruit, vegetables, or bread, or drink there for any students to take. Students can grab one of these brown bags on the table and pack up an apple or a cereal to enjoy as an after-school snack or dinner at home. The bags are even decorated by our classmates and student council or the community service club. Some of our veggies come in little containers. By simply adding lids near the garbage, near the bags, they can even enjoy that corn salad or grapes at home.
Another idea is to always have a garbage can designated for compost. Kids passionate about saving the earth will man the can. They could take turns reminding everyone to throw those fruits and vegetables into the compost can instead of a regular can. Food waste that decomposes in landfills adds to greenhouse gases. We could be reducing greenhouse gases every day, improving better soil, and growing better food for hungry people.
A final idea solves those 100 unused hot meals that are thrown away each day in Avon schools alone. Our school PTO organizations can buy containers to package up the leftover entrees and refrigerate until the end of the school day. Or maybe the students can bring a reusable container at home that is labeled with, and they can be responsible for washing in between uses. When we met with Food Share, the managers actually shared a grant possibility with us that Avon schools could apply for and receive funds for the reusable containers. Food Share also told us that other schools already wrap these meals in plastic wrap and do provide them to the kids in need. Our schools can learn from these schools and help our friends that may not have dinner otherwise. Any students who receive free and reduced lunch could take one of these to-go meals at the end of the day and bring it home for dinner that night.
The staff and counselors who help distribute the weekend backpack programs through Gift of Love organization know who could benefit from having a to-go meal to have for dinner or a snack. We are meeting with the Avon School Administration and Nutrition Staff today to discuss our findings and how some of our ideas and solutions can help reduce food waste and help feed hungry kids in our Avon schools.
As a team, we are just starting to fight hunger. One poster, one volunteer, and one lunch tray at a time. Join us by donating food, money, time to your local food bank, and make your community healthier and happier, all thanks to you.
Also, as part of the robotics competition, we give other teens tokens, and since we're the Avon Lemonheads, we have woman heads, or those are the...
Excellent job. You guys are quite brave to come to one of our meetings and be televised as well. So thank you so much. What I'm especially proud of, though, is that not only did you do your research, you also provided solutions. So thank you for using your creativity and for giving us something to truly think about and hopefully utilize. So congratulations to you, and good luck this weekend.
Don't forget your robot. Don't forget your robot.
Good luck on Saturday. Yeah.
Want to show us how the robot works? Go ahead. We got to see how you're going to do. We want the preview.
Okay, so basically, as Lauren said, there's the part of the missions, is there's 15 missions, and you have to program the robot to do some of the missions. And we have built some contraptions and attachments that allow the robot to do some of the missions.
So we have, we have like some components of this robot, which like, which helps the robot complete each mission. For example, we put this like, yeah, so we put it on, so there's this mission called the swing. So we have to rotate this, and we just like push up the swing, so, and so, and so like the swing just like falls off, and then we get like points according to the, and then so whoever gets like most points like wins in the competition gets to go to the next round.
In the competition, we have five rounds. We have, as Rohan just said, we have attachments to complete each mission. There are 14 missions in the competition. We can choose which one to do each round, and if our highest, our highest point value in total for all of the five rounds, so if we got 100 in the second round, but 200 in the fifth round, they would, the judges would take our fifth round score, and so based on that, we would move up or not.
We all enjoy math and science, and we've really enjoyed STEM, so we've joined this robotics team to help increase that knowledge.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate you. This is the time of our meeting where we acknowledge how many of you have come to truly show your support of our Avon Achievers and our LEGO Robotics Team. If that was the main reason for your visit with us, we are perfectly comfortable with you dismissing yourselves, and we won't take it personally, so you can do that now. You are always welcome to stay if you choose. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. We're regrouping you on.
Thank you.
Now, moving to approval of the minutes. Board of Education, regular monthly minutes, October 15th, I have a motion to approve.
Please to move.
Jackie moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, you're going to abstain, Jason abstained.
Okay.
Okay, Board of Education, special meeting, October 28th, 2019, do I have a motion to approve?
Please to all move.
Okay, Jason will move, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That one passes in this room. Now, we'll move to communication from the public. Anyone who is here with us this evening that would like to speak? Okay, Ms. Lewis, would you like to...
Hi, my name is Dr. Katherine Lewis, and I'm a resident of Avon. I'm a parent, and I'm here to voice a couple of concerns about the minutes from last time, and to also raise some new concerns. I'm glad these minutes are recorded. As I said last time, I was here primarily in my capacity as an expert witness, not as a parent, and I was voicing concern related to the safety of your school, and that's not reflected in your minutes. So I want to make sure we're crystal clear about that, and I'm going to go over why that is. I am concerned about some of the material in your curriculum not being approved, and since the time I came to testify before you last time, there's been additional malfeasance. I'm grateful to the superintendent for being extremely receptive to my concerns, and let me articulate specifically of which, of what I speak. I'll preface this by saying, I'm an independent voter, and some of you are sitting on the board, due in part to activism in 2015, of which I was part, when I founded a court that school, school social workers were cut from the curriculum, from the school. And I was very active, I made national news. I was concerned after the curriculum committee, when it was imparted to me, that my concern was labeled a partisan concern, and specifically, my husband's name was drawn into that by a member of your board, which I find abhorrent. So I assure you today, I sit here as a nonpartisan, out of concern for children, and no matter what you do to me, I will continue to voice that concern. There's nothing that will silence me in that regard. So let's go to where we are. So in September, I went to the curriculum committee because I became aware of a book being taught that was about a date rape, and the author, the articulated point of the book, it's a Me Too narrative, was to make people re-experience complex post-traumatic stress disorder. I think that's probably not a good idea. And I say that, as I said last time, as a psychiatrist, I testify frequently about rape-trauma syndrome, and I'm considered a national and international expert, I've been grant-funded, I went over that, I'm happy to provide my CD. So I thought maybe the curriculum committee would do something about that. They didn't. The book was taught, the book wasn't approved, and it doesn't, it was grandfathered, quote unquote, but it appears nowhere on your curriculum, which violates your policy of posting curriculum in a timely manner. So I sent the superintendent, the curriculum, it appears nowhere. Neither does Thug, The Hate U Give, it appears nowhere on your curriculum, which was last posted in 2018. So it appears nowhere. It's almost like this controversial material was willfully concealed, but it doesn't stop there. So I raised concerns about that. My understanding is the superintendent did visit the school, did speak to students directly about the book, and I very much appreciate that. They went ahead, and I had talked to you last time about showing the R-rated, not the Kite Runner, One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest is R-rated, and it was shown last year. I don't have much of an opinion on that, but you went ahead, the school went ahead and showed Speak, which depicts a date rape. It showed that movie with no parental approval after I voiced that concern. That's jaw-dropping, it's abhorrent, it's unbelievable. I sat in this room and told you, I feel the pulse of schools, I assess schools for risk and threat, that's what I do. I told you that on a Tuesday. After I left, a young woman presented a quarter-a-million-dollar proposal to you about how to make doors locked so she doesn't get shot. You don't connect that as a feeling of unsafety, and within two weeks, you have a potential threat at a rally. I don't know how more to impart to you, there's a difficulty with the climate of your school. I cannot say it more clearly than that. So you show this movie with no parental permission, and it doesn't stop there. They also show Mean Girls, which is just a waste of time in an English class, it's bizarre, that's PG-13, no parental approval, waste of time, don't care much about it, and it doesn't stop there. I then, my child is targeted and marked exempt for the consent form, that's neither here nor there, but it doesn't stop there. I then get this form, which I marked on the date I received it, which is a consent form for things that have already occurred. If you don't have a problem with that, I don't know how to help you. If I'm at Shipman &amp; Goodman, and I find out, and I've worked with Shipman, I do education law, you are asking for permission for things that have already occurred. I don't even know how to unpack that for you. And there's no appreciation of wrongfulness for this behavior, none. I came to you out of respect in the curriculum committee, I was trying to help you, and the only thing that happened was my husband was disparaged, my child was targeted, and I was ignored. I don't know what else to say. So, to correct these minutes further, I think I've made it pretty clear that my concern is exposing children to inappropriate, I don't believe in book banning, I have no problem with people watching these movies after school, I don't care, I think there needs to be communication, knowledge, it is not okay. These minutes say I said that you showed the Kite Runner, that movie was never shown in the school, and I did not allege that. It's my belief that it might have been suggested for ninth-grade honors English, that may or may not be correct, that's not my major problem. You certainly had kids read Speak, and there's certainly the intent to have them read The Hate U Give, and to show that movie, which is a 2018 movie, so I don't know how that would already be approved, I'm a little baffled. And so I just remain gravely concerned at what appears to be also the use of young adult fiction for teachers that might not be able to engage our learners, which you say are so gifted. Is the position, for example, that showing WALL-E, the movie WALL-E, WALL-E, G-rated movie, is superior to Learning Throw? That's what was explained to me by English. Are we thinking that showing YouTube videos of animated Poe the Tell-Tale Heart is what you want these gifted students at Avon to do? I emailed the superintendent, and again, I'm grateful to her, it speaks for itself. I never come to meetings to shoot my mouth off unless I have the data. This is really a problem, that you are, that this is being done, that people think it's okay. My other student came home today with an assignment, argue for or against Build That Wall, and they were instructed, prove that President Trump isn't xenophobic. That's a whole separate issue, but I would encourage people to teach people how to think, to have them espouse an idea, and then have them take the opposite opinion and defend it. Right? I mean, we don't want to have propaganda in our classroom making students feel unsafe. I have, my children in their time here have been asked who their parents vote for, it's bizarre, it's not acceptable. I think date rape is unquestionably important topic, but is it an important topic for English? Is it a mandatory topic? When I raised that with the English teacher, and I said, "Why isn't this in health?", the response was, "The health teachers don't know what they're doing." That's what was explained to me by English. Are we thinking that showing YouTube videos of animated Poe the Tell-Tale Heart is what you want these gifted students at Aivon to do? I, I emailed, um, the superintendent and again, I'm grateful to her. Um, it speaks for itself. I never come to meetings to shoot my mouth off unless I have the data. This is really a problem. That you are, that, that this is being done, that people think it's okay. My, my other student came home today with an assignment, argue for or against build that wall. And they were instructed, prove that President Trump isn't xenophobic. I, that's a whole separate issue, but I would encourage people to teach people how to think, to have them espouse an idea and then have them take the opposite opinion and defend it. I, right? I mean, we don't want to have propaganda in our classroom making students feel unsafe. I have, my children in their time here have been asked who their parents vote for. It's bizarre. It's not acceptable. I think date rape is unquestionably important topic when I, but is it an important topic for English? Is it a mandatory topic? When I raised that with the English teacher and I said, why isn't this in health? The response was the health teachers don't know what they're doing. Something is up in your school. There's a reason you've had five principals. There's something going on there. There's a reason this happens. Right? And I'm just asking for this to be addressed because, as I said, that apparently the minutes missed. I'm not some disgruntled parent. I'm an expert witness who's called in to assess schools for my living and the climate of schools. And I'm here to tell you that when I'm here on a Tuesday, somebody proposes locks so that they don't get shot and then you have, whatever it was with the pep rally, there's something up, people. And why do you need to try to have some political agenda in an English class? By all means, if students want it, by all means, allow them to do it. Show whatever movies you want at night. Do whatever you want. Students can read whatever they want. I'm not about book banning. But mandating books for fleet with profanity? Not workable. Young adult fiction, this is like mandating Judy Blume for middle school boys. Like, why would you do that? It's odd. My concern though, on its face, and I'd asked the board to look at it. How and why are you asking me to give consent for something that already occurred? How? And, and the superintendent knows I have the paper trail to establish exactly what occurred here. And I know from systems that when behavior like this occurs, you got a big problem. Thank you for your time. I wish you the best. Yes?
To the chair.
Sure.
I, Dr. Lewis, I actually was going to speak to some of what you spoke about tonight in my update, so.
Great.
If you can, if you can wait with us until I get to there.
Sure. I appreciate it. And as I said earlier, I can't thank you enough for your time. And, um, I can assure you again, this isn't partisan. I want everybody to succeed. Uh, you haven't seen me at school board meetings. I've been very grateful for my children's education. What's going on, at least in the eleventh grade curriculum, is unlike anything I've ever seen to date. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. There was another parent?
Yes.
Mr. Jobe? Just state your name again to the record.
No problem. Uh, Daniel Jobe, Aivon resident, parent of two. Yes, two in high school. Um, thanks for, um, for everything you guys do. I know there's a lot and, um, it's a very heavy topic. I feel kinda bad presenting, but I'm back on behalf of the band program. Um, I'm, uh, and with the Fang Group, Friends of Aivon Music Education. And, uh, I was looking through, I always follow you guys, even though I can't attend and I follow the agendas and I know that we're about it, budget season, I believe. And, um, I've been working closely as a volunteer with Mr. Culbertson with the band program and, you know, he's a fabulous director, great attitude. I'm not even sure if he knows I'm here tonight, so, um, I'm really here on the behalf of the parents. We had a parent meeting last night and we're just concerned, uh, about Mr. Culbertson. So I just want to, uh, just share a few things with you and just give you some, some food for thought. Um, Fame has been very proactive with Mr. Culbertson over the last two years. As you know, he wanted to start a marching band and, and we were able to fundraise about thirteen thousand dollars to provide instruments to do that. And with that money, Mr. Culbertson's taken a group that sat in the stands two seasons ago to then playing the Star Spangled Banner on the field last year to now they did a halftime show at two, um, two, um, games this year and actually marched on the fifty-yard line of the field, which is a big deal. And, um, that's him. Um, pun intended. He's a one-man band, um, making that happen. And, uh, with about two hundred and ten kids between seventh through twelfth grade. So there's a lot of parents that are helping him with that. Um, well, it's our concern. Our concern is really about the students. And, um, with your permission, may I pass these out? I don't know. It's just a little handout. Is that permissible?
Sure.
Let you guys pass them around, but it's just something for you to have. There's some data there that, again, I pulled together by looking on the web, um, just to do some analysis to share and I'll, after you get impacted, I'll, I'll speak to it a little bit, but we believe our students are really missing something with, uh, a director. As you guys know, the, uh, middle school director's job was cut out, I believe, three school years ago. And, um, we're, are one of our students missing, they're missing a lot of individual and small group instruction. Um, our, our kids, we have less and less kids trying out for some of the regional items, uh, regional areas where they can excel and show off their talents, but you need instruction for that. Um, the biggest thing is they're missing access to Mr. Culbertson's. Um, if, if you know his schedule, one day he's here at the high school. When he's here at the high school, his office is dark at the middle school. On the other day, he's at the middle school, his office is dark here. So he's not accessible before and after school to a lot of, of kids and they're not accessible to the help. Um, we believe as a Fang Group that there would be more public performances, which if, as you know, in, in the arts, public performance is how you express and how you learn. And, um, the big thing is, and with our kids in high school, we've seen a decline in the offering of extra classes for kids that want to take things like theory and different, different items. And now that the chart's all right, you can see on the left side, I took some of the, our, um, our, our relate, our, our, um, valley schools and looked at how many, what their student body is. And I, and I know you guys have a, a lot of data, so this is not proof out there. It's from the website, so, um, of each school to get there. But that's seventh through twelfth, um, student body and how many, I believe, from the research is on the band staff. And you can see, Aivon is the only one in this grouping that has one director for seventh through twelfth grade. And that's one for approximately a student body of fifteen hundred kids, seventh through twelfth. And I know Mr. Culbertson's personally teaching two hundred and ten kids, seventh through twelfth. It seems like that's a lot of kids to do. And we're offering to give them the help, but again, I know it's time for you guys to make the difficult decision. Um, just as a note, you can see that many of our, our, our friendly neighbors have won what's called the, the NAMM two thousand nineteen Best Communities for Music Education Award. Um, other schools not on this list because I didn't feel they were comparable to us are Bristol, Canton, Bloomfield, Suddington, Torrington, West Hartford. Who's missing? Aivon. And our, our product just is way too good for that. Our choir program, our orchestra programs, our programs are too good not to be on that list. So while I'm here, I'm here basically to share with you some thoughts as you're going through this process. Um, I, I looked at the budget for last year. I'm a financial guy and I was thinking, man, fifty-eight million dollar budget, can we not find space? I, I appreciate how difficult the job is to do, but anything that you guys can do to help, I think it's gonna help our kids because if Mr. Culbertson has to teach over two hundred kids, that's, that's about fifteen percent of our seventh through twelfth kids. We're happy to help as a group. Fame is going to continue to support him. We know we have your support, but we're just asking as you're going through the process if there's anything you can consider. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for your service and your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. I'll speak about it when I get to my. Please come forward and we can state your name.
Hi, my name is Jim Walsh. I'm Aivon resident. My wife and I have three children, live in town. We've been here for ten years with a sixth grader and a fourth grader and a pre-K. And we couldn't be happier with the schools. It's the reason we chose the community and we remain very happy with what's going on. Um, my topic is a little bit back to the first speaker in that my sixth grader has come home talking about, uh, a session they do every day where they watch the news. And although I trust wholeheartedly that every teacher in this community is gonna present facts in a way that gives the kids an opportunity to think critically, um, I don't believe in our nation today, there's a media outlet out there that allows for that type of presentation of fact and the critical thinking that comes after that, but rather flashy headlines and dramatization to draw an audience. And I just don't, I, I guess I don't understand where the media fits in our current education system where they're just talking, it, it's, it's really a bunch of flashy pictures and a bunch of quick facts and it's not really a deep thoughtful process that goes, that they go through when they, when they view those, that type of content. And the concern I have is that regardless of what news outlet we use to present these facts to the kids, they're not actual facts. They're, they're slanted in some way because of some political agenda that every media outlet has. And again, doesn't matter your political affiliation. That's the unfortunate reality of our media today. And I don't know what the process was to introduce this into the curriculum, but it's there now. And my understanding is a lot of the fifth and sixth grade are viewing this on a daily basis. And I, I guess I, I would, I'd love to test the value of what it's presenting to our children today.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you very much for attending and for commenting. We appreciate your feedback. Moving along to items of information proposals, our student representatives, Mr. Glow, Ms. Daniels.
At the beginning of November, quarter one ended and quarter two has been off to a great start, at least in my opinion. Um, the volleyball team is competing in seven miles tomorrow night and our students have really been going above and beyond with our holiday fundraisers, which Al will talk more about now.
So to continue off the point about, uh, quarter one recently ending, as y'all are aware, after quarter one has ended, there were half-days at Aivon High School where parents were invited for parent-teacher conferences. And at these parent-teacher conferences, various organizations such as Vibe for the Kids and the Aivon High School Student Government have organized fundraisers for various causes. For instance, the Aivon High School, uh, Student Government raised a turkey trough where, um, donations would go towards providing.
Turkeys, right?
Yes. Turkeys and canned goods towards the turkey trough. Um, in addition, there has also been a donation where you can donate money and that would go towards teachers shaving their beards, which I find personally pretty interesting. Yeah, in addition, Vibe for the Kids is also hosting a faculty versus student basketball game upcoming. And, uh, yeah.
Is that why Rankowitz has run a beard?
Yes. If you give money, then you can vote on which, like, way you want him to shave it.
I have been asked not to donate money.
I was like, can the community donate?
Thank you very much. It is an important time of year, especially to collect food and I know we're working closely with local charities, so thank you for that participation on the students' part as well. Now moving on to the financial report, Ms. Mashad.
Well, that's a really difficult act to follow, so on that note, um, not much to report. As you know, our typical trends over the first couple of months of the year are pretty slow-going after we get all of the initial purchase orders in, but here's the highlights. The unencumbered balance fell, um, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in change, or one point six-six percent from the month prior. Most notable items making that occur were changes in the four hundred and five hundred object codes, which are property services and other purchase services. The change mostly represented, um, the maintenance, actual payments, the payouts from the POs that were already issued, as well as the first and second month's final tuition and transportation payments for students that are outclassed.
Thank you. Were there any questions? Thank you very much. Committee and Liaison Reports, Curriculum and Professional Practices. Jackie?
Yes, we had a great meeting. Um, the, one of the most important things that we were able to accomplish, that I'm personally thrilled about, is we have gotten the, um, IDs created with the supports and some mental health outreach numbers are on them. And Mr. Rankowitz was nice enough to let me borrow his so I could show you guys what, so every high school student now has one of these, is my understanding. I don't know if the middle school students have them, or is it just the high school?
High school.
So that was a great accomplishment. I'm really, really proud of our committee. I'm really appreciative of the support of the high school and Sean George and I think it's Mental Health Matters, uh, which is a community group. And we look forward to really kind of reaching out beyond, beyond that. So that was, that was exciting. Um, we talked about the course enrollments, the, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen AP enrollment. Comparatively shared, seventy more AP classes are being taken this year than last year. Um, we discussed the summary of the AHS course enrollments and we shared that, um, reflective data. And we talked about the new ad drop period and how that's gonna impact students. I don't really think we know yet. I can, I think we'll have to kind of see what that looks like as we get further down the road. We discussed the course proposal recommendations, which I believe Bridget will discuss further in the business, or, yes. The enrichment update, I'm not gonna really touch on. I think we talked about that during the budget presentation. It, what I was gonna say is we were gonna look to consider that universal screen and it looks like we're really considering that, so that's exciting. I do want to speak to this idea about parental consent. Uh, we did not discuss that at our last meeting, but I am concerned about it and I would like to make sure that we do address it in our next meeting and make sure that we can understand what that process is, who it applies to. You know, I, I mean, I think we actually in these meetings have talked a lot about process and systems and this is obviously one that we need to really look at and highlight and, and kind of get a hold of. So I look forward to addressing that. And I, I forgot to look up when the next meeting is, Shirley. I don't know if you know offhand, but I think it's, uh.
I think it's in January.
It's in January. So I don't have service, but I can, I think it's in January sometime.
I'm pretty sure.
So I can update everybody. Thank you.
I'm not finding it quickly, but I believe.
I, I can add at the end. I just don't have service in there, so I can't check.
Sure. Okay. So let's move on to finance with Jake.
The only thing to report from our finance meeting is the budget transfers, which we're gonna discuss later tonight. And our next meeting is Tuesday, December tenth at six P M.
Thank you very much. Negotiations, Jason.
So we recently started negotiations with the food service workers. Um, because of the confidential nature of negotiations, you can't say much about it. We're gonna discuss a little bit tonight.
Thank you. Policy, Laura?
So policy did not meet in November. Uh, however, we did receive an email, the board did, from superintendent and food chair, and basically, we're just going to add that item to the consent calendar regarding the policy, which we talked about in our last regular meeting, having to do with honesty and election.
So should we do that now? Should, do you wanna make a motion to add policy six-one-two-one to the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Great.
David's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It's been added to the consent calendar.
The next name is February.
Thank you very much.
Jackie, yours is February third.
February third. Six, that's five thirty.
I think that's because of the budget schedule.
Oh, it's Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a Monday.
Okay. Good. Is Mr. Rankowitz's ID around here somewhere?
Getting back to the board chair.
Perfect. Now I just wanna make sure if somebody had it. I didn't wanna lock him out.
To the chair, if I may.
Sure.
For clarity of the minutes and for the record, policy sixty-one twenty-one is not discrimination in instructional materials.
All right, now Liaison Reports, Board Rep to Curriculum and Professional Development Council, that would be me. I had the privilege of attending again. Um, it was a full day of instruction for staff, um, covering all different grade levels. And our focus was on the Blueprint for Excellence, which you can see before you is the work that we've been doing as a board to move the district in a forward progressive motion. Um, so the staff weighed in on pieces of that, so we're all on the same page with what our direction is. Um, we had a guest speaker come to discuss with us the Portrait of the Graduate so that even at the pre-K level, we're already having the foresight of where we're taking them. So that was good conversation and nicely, I think everyone, parent and board member hopefully has received a letter from Dr. Carnamora that lays out the process by which they're gathering what our concept of the Portrait of the Graduate would be, what are the pieces that we think are crucial. And we had the opportunity to, um, participate in that. It's called the Thought Exchange and the way you can access that is in the letter that Dr. Carnamora sent out. But you can enter in your thought as to what you think should be included, then you can grade other people's thoughts in the same session. And you can go on as long as you wish. You can stop and you can go back at another day if you have more thoughts. But I think this process will hopefully get a good community-wide, um, perspective of what we here believe our students should have before graduation. And it was very good work and we meet again in January. Is that correct? So we'll continue on this trajectory, but it was a good day. Um, next would be Board Representative to Aivon Board of Finance, David.
Okay. Uh, their meeting was last night. Uh, I was called away to a work emergency, which is just as well. Their primary agenda item was, uh, discussion for the next budget year, twenty twenty twenty-one. And, uh, up until tonight, we did not have any numbers in any public documents to talk about any preliminary numbers. Now, we are most of the town budget and so any discussion would really involve us, but there wasn't anything I could have shared with them at that point anyway. Uh, so anyway, I'll work through the chair to make sure that we come up with the message that is acceptable to everyone in terms of what we push over there. They're gonna wanna know something, get a heads up for what next year is gonna look like. Fortunately, tonight's meeting gets us on a start towards that and, uh, we'll work out that message together because I don't wanna make something up that maybe the things you don't wanna do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you, David. Um, Aivon Town Council, Jason?
So the final meeting of the Track and Field Building Committee took place on October thirtieth. Um, long story short, that was basically just the committee agreeing it's hiring to turn the five-day building of the town council. Um, at that point on, October thirtieth, there were just a few punchless items I hadn't yet finished on the field, but as I understand it, the town, I assume, is. on the field, but as I understand it, the town administration is working together to make sure that happens. So then the town council met on November 7th, accepted the project as complete from the committee. There was some discussion, as a president of the past, about, you know, keeping an eye on the maintenance of the field. As I understand it, I think it developed a maintenance log to make sure we keep track of what we've got on the field. Some discussion about just proper use and enforcement of the field going forward in terms of during the school day, outside the school day, things that should happen on the field and not happen on the field. One of the items I brought up was outside of school hours, I think it's important that Avon police also know the rules of the field, so if an officer drags by, you can recognize that somebody's doing something that shouldn't be done on that field. But I think we're in good shape to coordinate all of that between the town and the board organization. We're well postured for that. The town council also approved a $52,000 bill of supplemental appropriation for upgrades over Fisher Meadow on softball fields, so that's a positive thing for us. It's a nice field. Softball team, I believe, uses that field. We're doing some work over there. And the last item that I found interesting was they appointed a student as a non-voting member of the Clean Energy Committee, and had some discussions about perhaps doing the same thing. Other committees had asked me what I thought of adding a student representative to our board, and I told them I thought it was probably the best way to really get the pulse of what's going on in the school. So it sounds like they're interested in expanding that to other students, so hopefully there'll be some interest in the high school to get involved in some of those opportunities.
Excellent. That's a great idea. Thank you. Are there any questions for Jason? All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Board Representative to Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
That meeting's tomorrow.
Oh.
I have a conflict. It's an open indication to anybody else who would like to sit in. Otherwise, I will be forwarding the minutes to Deb and to Bridget and... And if anything really, I'll scan them first for anything really impactful, and if there's some data, let me know.
All right. Thank you very much. So moving on to the Chair's Report, I would like to just take this opportunity to acknowledge our Veterans Day ceremonies, I would call them, or assemblies. I really felt privileged to be able to participate the entire day again, so I went to each of the schools' different assemblies, and it's just so nice to see the students engaged, and they really do pay attention, and they really are participating fully and learning about the sacrifices that these veterans have made for our country, for them to be here today. And I really like, it seems to me, that all of the schools have spoken to each other ahead of time, because there's no duplication at all, even the songs that are sung. So everybody does something unique, so it's interesting to the veterans as well, because they're with us all throughout the day, too, and it's such a nice group of men and women that come each year. So it was an honor to be a part of that, and so I'm proud of us for having school that day, because I think it makes more of an impact on the students to participate in why they have that day and why it's special versus being at home, maybe just playing video games. So that was good to be a part of again. I attended the turf ribbon cutting ceremony along with a few other board members that were there. That was nice to finally acknowledge that the project is pretty much complete at this point, looks beautiful, and so moving forward, I'm excited for what that means for our school community, our families in the community. Couldn't get better as far as location, just walk out from school and be able to go attend a game, and I know it's been pulling people in that have perhaps once been a part of our community, and they're revisiting us in order to be engaged in this moment. I also just wanted to remind you all that once a month, Dr. Carnamula and I have the privilege of meeting with the Parents and Leadership Group. Those are primarily women. We do have a couple of men that join us from time to time that are in the board leadership roles on their PTOs, and so it's a good group think opportunity for them to kind of pick Dr. Carnamula's brain, have her directly answer questions or concerns that might be important out in the community, and so that's something that I'm really proud of, us participating in the school spirit has been on the tips of everybody's lips at this point. We'd like to really bring it together as Avon as a community, so I just wanted to remind you that we still do that every month. I think that's it for me, and I will move it on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. First, just in the hiring report, drawing your attention, to the, we replaced our safety and security specialist, the person at the front desk of the middle school, he began with us since our last board meeting. So we hired some additional par educators. If you were here for the finance committee meeting tonight, you'll hear part of the explanation about why that is, some additional needs and changes that we wanted to address at Pine Grove and Roaring Brook. We also said goodbye to a par professional who was a great part of our staff, who had already gone forward, Kelsey Dowling, and got a teaching certification, so she's already heard, goodbye from me, but it's a public meeting, I'll say it again. And also Nicole Nielsen, one of our special education teachers who need to move on, and we have that position posted. That said, the person, I just want to quickly do this, because the person who's not here, because she was on the previous board agenda, but it had just happened, so she wasn't at the meeting, our new assistant principal from Avon Middle School, Ms. Christina Wallace is in the audience, just wanted her to at least be able to introduce herself to us as the board, because I don't think that you have met Christina as a whole. Thank you, Christina.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Very excited for Christina to start and things to go back to normal, as normal as things ever are at a middle school, if you work at a middle school, or ever have worked in a middle school, you know what gentleman speaking that means. Thank you, Christina. We're thrilled to have you with us. The enrollment report, I'll just say quickly, where it's a few students difference, I will say, too, we spoke at a previous board meeting about keeping track of students who left us, potentially for private schools, for example, as I mentioned to the board, I did those withdrawal reports from Avon High School. I have continued any that we have seen, finding the contact information for those folks, actually just got a few more of those, not because they just withdrew, but I was catching up. Ms. Moy provided me with them, so I continue to make those phone calls. I don't always get through to the folks, but I have some more on my calendar, actually for tomorrow to speak to. So I just wanted, as a way of follow-up, to tell you that I am continuing to do what I mentioned I would do at a previous board meeting, and touching base to find out, almost an exit interview, if you will, with any of our parents or guardians who have moved their students from the district, not to another state, for example, which usually that's fairly obvious why that is, but to a different school of choice. Strategic plan update, we're going to talk tonight about what we already spoke about at the board retreat, so I'll keep this brief. As you know, we just recently met to go back through these goals again and had a great conversation. I appreciate that all of you were there and present and helping us to move this work forward. Our administrative team and our faculty and staff has been hard at work on this plan behind the scenes also, so happy to talk about it tonight. Also, we have continued our work as an administrative team, calibrating our own practice around our definition of rigorous teaching and learning, and particularly relating that to our statewide teacher evaluation rubric and our practices here at Avon. We had another session together the week before last, and we'll spend another few hours together doing that in December. So it's obviously part of our strategic plan, and I spoke at length about pieces tonight in the finance meeting, so I won't belabor that point, but we are at this point. A few updates I wanted to share since we were here at the last meeting. First, I'll thank Dr. Lewis for speaking at length to me more than once, including at the meeting, obviously on another occasion. I wanted to address some of what was brought up previously and also brought up publicly tonight, because I had already had that conversation offline, outside of a board meeting, including with Mr. Rankowitz at high school, Dr. Estelle Rusek, and in some cases, depending on the situation, with our Human Resources Director, Astrametic. So I'll start by saying, you know that I walk a fine line in some of these regards, because if we're talking about something that's related to a personnel issue that can be tied directly back to a person, I'm going to avoid speaking about that to the extent that I can, but I still thought it was important to bring back some information related to the concerns that were shared with us. First of all, in regards to the curriculum, the curriculum that we have posted online is our approved curriculum. It is not all posted on the public part of the website. There are pieces that are still the internal version that are not updated from the website migration. That is still a piece that we are working on. I am now aware of that. As you know, unfortunately, sometimes I'm still digging out, trying to get up to speed on where we are with certain things, and unfortunately, sometimes it's an issue, and sometimes unfortunately, it's a major issue, brought to our attention that makes us look back at something. In particular, I will say, and I also will say the same for Mr. Rankowitz, who, like me, is still settling in, feels like a long time. For me, most days, I think Mr. Rankowitz and me, depending on the day I ask you, the policies, the procedures, we are continually having to revisit, unfortunately, sometimes when it's brought to us. So Dr. Rusek and I have spoken about this, and we need to pull down some of what we have put up and be more current in some of the placement, because we have made additions and corrections, some are corrections, to the curriculum that exists. So that's in, by way of an update, I didn't bring every piece of that as evidence with you tonight, I just want you to know I'm aware of that. Partially how I'm aware of that, so some of these conversations, primarily in the last couple of weeks, when the two of us, Dr. Rusek and I, looked back at some of what was there. Also, insofar as, so for, I'll use this as an example, because it was brought up here at the previous meeting, when we were talking about the books that we utilize in English Language Arts at the high school, there are books listed in the curriculum that may be taught. They are not an all-inclusive list. They ought to be an all-inclusive list of what is potentially used. We had that conversation actually initially after Dr. Lewis spoke at public comment in the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee, and Ms. Blaia asked me to look into what some of the concerns were then. It has been, in some cases, difficult to untangle, because I think Dr. Lewis referenced it here this evening also, there are a number of books that are still being taught that were, as the term was used, grandfathered at some point along the way before the current policy existed for approval through the Curriculum and Professional Development Council. And that, I had to, sometimes my job is a detective and digging through minutes and so on, too, to try to find some of that. Dr. Rusek, very helpful in finding that. All of that said, what does that mean? All that means is that moving forward, we, number one, need to revisit the curriculum as a whole that is posted and ensure that it is the most current, one. Two, that the list, we've already gone through it for accuracy, the list that we maintain that has had board approval versus what is grandfathered, we need to make sure that that is online and public and a piece of what people have access to, and also that our teachers are sending home as necessary with the units, any potential controversial material. Put that aside for a moment, let me just finish a piece of it. So we are, we need to work on some of the posting of the curriculum. That's already underway, number one. Number two, we need to ensure that we have the exhaustive list of, and this is just one example, the texts that may be taught. We are also looking at the texts that are taught as a whole. We've begun that process. Again, that is not something easy that gets done overnight, as I'm sure you might be aware, but we have had some conversations between us at central office already. As a matter of fact, just had some of these conversations both this morning and this afternoon with Mr. Rankowitz, yesterday, last week, and we have begun that process of revisiting this at the level, mostly here at the high school, because that's the primary area of our focus and some concerns right now. That aside, there was an issue with policy regarding consent. So I want to address this twofold. Number one, in our Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee meeting, we had a conversation related to consent around books. And I went back to the policy, Mr. Rankowitz also looked at the policy. As usual, we have a policy that refers to it. It asks for parents to be notified, to be notified in a timely fashion and so forth. Certainly not for them to be notified after the fact, like you heard happened here tonight. Not going to contest that. That is an issue for us. That did happen. We are aware of that. Again, I can thank Dr. Lewis, and I actually spoke with another parent about the same. Mr. Rankowitz is aware of that, has already begun to rectify that situation. What I will say, by way of explanation, not excuse, is that the form that had been used here for quite some time, say since 2011, was not necessarily what it ought to ever have been, and so it just, in agreement with the most current policy, is what I should say. So unfortunately, sometimes, and this is where, you know, I'm left, this is my job as a whole, to ensure that our policies are followed. We have a number of policies. Sometimes they are put out at various stages and not necessarily, as you know, always communicated throughout the years and revisited, and this is an example of that. Mr. Rankowitz and I and Dr. Rusek, we visited the policy related to modification of parents, what that looks like. It is already well down the path of being corrected at the high school. Just spoke, actually, at the end of today with Mr. Rankowitz about the same, what they will be doing moving forward, which is in line with the board policy, is to notify parents. First of all, they have to go through the principal, that's part of the policy, when they are going to show an R-rated movie, for example. You need approval internally first, and they are going to do it unit by unit, so that as we're moving forward, it makes sense, it's in a timely fashion because it begins, and there's an explanation about why we are showing X film, because it is directly related to X piece of literature and/or the thematic study that we are doing. So that is how they are moving forward at the high school. If I said something wrong, shake your head no, but I believe that, I believe that I have all of that correct at this point. So nothing I can say about that right now, except that it did not happen the way that we would have liked it to, but I think frankly, that in some ways, it has not happened the way that would be congruent with our policy for some time, from a blanket standpoint. That doesn't mean everyone was ever following the policy, but if the goal is everyone follows it the same way with the same amount of fidelity, that's not what I saw as a result of this, and I'm grateful, Mr. Rankowitz, for helping us to fix that here at the high school.
If you have questions about this?
Yep, I'll stop.
Is this the right time to ask?
Sure.
So the policy, the one that we just added, the...
Non-discrimination?
But that is not in regards to, you also said in regards to materials.
So we have another policy related to controversial issues. I actually...
But that one does not relate to this, the 6112 does not relate to this particular...
No, but it is, this, the policy that we discussed at the last board meeting and that we are approving tonight, we went through already at the policy committee, is related to non-discrimination in the instructional programming and teaching and in the resources. So also does, though, speak to, as a blanket statement, part of what we heard as concerns tonight related to whether or not the way something is presented is in a discriminatory way, but the controversial issues, policy speaks a little bit more to this than the non-discrimination does. And I actually have that in my folder for the next time we're at the policy committee meeting as a result of these conversations for us to revisit.
So do you anticipate that you will take that form that you said is kind of antiquated at this point, the actual consent form, will that go through policy or will that come through the...
So that would be a regulation of how we implement it, but I will bring it through the policy committee, so that it's clear and it's a part of, as you know, I like, even though we don't technically approve the regulations because they're how we implement the policy, I like to bring them through the policy committee meeting and show them to the board so that we're all on the same page and we're all kept in the same spot.
And right now, does it only, the antiquated version, does it only talk about books and not film?
The antiquated version talks about film, not books.
Film, not books, okay.
Yes.
Why not, and I...
And we did have some conversation about books, so I said, let's put that aside for a moment. I think that from the bigger systems perspective, we need to finish our work at looking at what texts we're utilizing in our mainstream English classes first, before we even have a conversation about what notification for others would look like, because I think that would be the right way to approach it.
So we may just need an update at the next meeting on this particular...
Yeah, and we may very well come through Curriculum and Professional Practices first, because that's where our conversation actually started. But I just, because at the board meeting last time, we heard some of the concerns, I wanted to bring back publicly some of what has happened in between. There are other things that have happened in between, but I don't want to speak to all of them because of what they entail. Jeff?
So my question I've raised before, and I think is actually...
So my question I've raised before and I think is actually something Dr. Lewis did bring to a meeting. And it is regarding implementation, so maybe a little bit beyond our scope. However, when a parent has, I said they will not consent. I would like to see, especially now that the teacher is being asked to work with building administration, I would like to see an appropriate lesson developed, alternative lesson, that doesn't isolate the student from the classroom. I think there's been a history of, well, all right, everyone's going to be able to watch this movie, but Johnny, you have to go to the library and read this. And I think that sends the wrong message. And that teachers, and I said support, I think teachers may need supports in terms of making sure that they have those alternative lesson plans available ahead of time. So when the teacher makes that instructional decision, okay, I'm going to show this movie or maybe not, they have something in place that will still meet the same learning objective. I just would ask that, there is that support given to the teachers?
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman. And I think we all agree, as I know I do and I'd say that my team as a whole would. I think that part of the underlying, the conversation that we're having is what are the materials as a whole so that the amount of alternatives that are necessary are fewer? In other words, that what we are talking about in our core courses, not in our electives, not in our... Because we have to think about what's developmentally appropriate. And we also have to think about the difference between what we know we can teach to the vast majority of our students differentiated, of course, as necessary for students with special needs at either end of the continuum. But I guess I'll just say duly noted, but I think our conversation primarily at present is let's look at the basics of what we are teaching and the materials that we are using and ensure that they are promoting what we have in our curriculum. Because we actually do have a very robust curriculum in our English Language Arts Department, particularly at the high school. We've done a great job of that. I think it's just revisiting, to your point, how it's implemented and going from there. So that's by way of the blanket update regarding that. I would also, oh, I wanted to speak, I almost actually interjected on the minutes because I knew there had been a question on the minutes specific to... We had a discussion on the minutes, Ms. Fleishman and I. And actually, Ms. Shute had asked me to revisit the meeting minutes with Shirley because she and I had the conversation and thought we both heard the same thing, which was related to the kite runner. And whether or not it was, Dr. Lewis had voiced a concern about the film being shown or the book being used. Shirley and I actually listened to that section of minutes a number of times. And although I will say from my conversation with Dr. Lewis either before and or after that meeting, that I know that that, her intent was not to talk about the kite runner as being shown as a film. It was the way it was portrayed in the minutes, when you listen to the minutes because of the question that Mr. Putnam Lowery asked of Ms. Lewis when she responded. The minutes, the minutes in other words, in that regard, I'm not speaking to the other issue that was brought up, but in that regard, the minutes actually are correct. It just was the way the line of questioning went and the way the answer was. So I didn't interrupt because I knew we would approve them as that portion did correct. But I just wanted to clarify for that reason. I will also say, I'm sorry that Mr. Jobe is gone, that we had some conversation already regarding the budget related to music and the position and also some of the items that are being asked for. I did not speak to you tonight about that in part because we are looking at the way the staffing is right now and whether or not there are any changes that we could make internally. We've been collecting quite a bit of data about what students are engaging in what programs, how many play strings, how many are in band and so forth. And so we are looking closely at that so that concern is not unheard by us. We are trying to determine if there's something different to do with the staffing that we have right now or we need to look at a different position. But as you heard me say earlier tonight, working very hard not to add any positions in that we don't determine are absolutely necessary in this year because of the increase that we're talking about. And also, he's, I think the other gentleman that's focused on also, but for the record, I think you all know that you have the name Shirley and I will follow up about the concerns that were raised related to the news lesson. I feel like there were other things I was supposed to tell you about there. Now we're going from mine.
I have a follow-up question I could, because in the dark, did some mention about a problem with some pep rally and was implied there was a threat? I don't know anything about this, so I figured since she'd spoken to you, I would ask a generic mother of an apple. My question of, do we have this under control? Is this something that you kept to the board?
The generic answer is, it is, what was mentioned is what I did notify you in the very general sense of at the time, which is around the time that we were last here speaking, that there was not, as Dr. Lewis alluded to also, there was not actually a threat, but there was something that we needed to look into here at the high school that came from something that resembled a whole lot of a game of telephone. But regardless, it was brought up.
So that's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Still on the details of that?
No.
And is that resolved yet or is that still in process?
It is resolved and I wouldn't share any other details because of the student confidentiality piece of it, but it is resolved. So I'll just speak quickly to under new business, if that's appropriate for me to do now regarding the graduation date, just putting it out there. I know we've spoken about it in the past, the legislation changed, as you know. And we are now able to set a graduation date ahead of time, which I think for the most part we're pretty excited about actually and knock on wood, very hopeful that it doesn't turn into a 15 snow day year. But if it did, we could always revisit our decision if we needed to. We are recommending, and Mr. Rankowitz and I work closely on this and he's spoken with folks here at the high school also. As with everything else, there's a lot of angles to consider, including any potential union issues with our certified or non-certified staff and what the workdays might look like when you get up to there. Who may still be working, teaching students who may not. We've had those discussions and ensured we could reconcile all of that. As you know, we now need to go offsite. We cannot put staging on the turf field, that is part of the conversations that was had as that's put in. So we are recommending you go back to the polo club or a Jew to do anything about that. I'm just letting you know that that is the plan. We did look into other venues. Based on the money that some would charge and the distance from here, we determined that it was better to stay at the polo grounds. I think it was nice that we were able to stay almost in town if we had to leave the high school. I think we'll do it even better this year than we did last year because, although it will be hard to talk based on what a great job they did here at the high school, but we are recommending that we set a graduation date of Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. Currently, the last day on our calendar, and you have a calendar in front of you, is the previous Friday. So that would build us in three weather days. And we got very lucky last year and we actually only had three weather days. But what I will say is, we had a conversation about not going too far ahead of when the last day is scheduled because having graduation two or three days, for example, after the last day of school is not a good idea. We have staffing concerns and so on. So I wouldn't want to go too far out from what we have as the current last day. We also chose this day after checking to ensure that we could book this at the polo grounds. So we know the date will work there. We know the date will work here.
Do you know the board about the meeting on the 16th?
Yes.
You just get your parking pass and you're, you don't need your gown.
I don't have to do any of it.
Okay.
I missed that gown.
I'm not sure how to follow that right in the moment. I am saying.
Are you done or can I ask?
You can ask questions. That's a good segue.
I'm just curious. For instance, we have five snow days. The actual last day of school is June 19th. Does it create any logistical problems for the senior graduating on the 17th? I think it's a great idea to set the date in advance for all the reasons we understand.
Yes.
You know, setting the dates for people to make choices. Are there any real serious logistical concerns should that happen?
Do you, let me make sure I understand your question.
If school ends two days after graduation, does it somehow screw up these seniors who are supposed to graduate on the 17th?
No.
I don't know enough about the...
No, and that's what we had to ensure, but as I said, we're getting close to Mr. Rankowitz, making sure that we still had exams and so on. One of the reasons that the state is allowing this to happen, that frankly I agree with as a superintendent, is because very often, if we'd moved too far into June with a graduation date, we lose some of our students at graduation. Some of them already have to leave if they're going to the military and they've missed graduation. Some of them leave even for orientation at colleges and universities. And we've seen some of them miss graduation for the same reason, if we get too far into the month of June. So having it here, still being mid-June, is a plus for our students who are leaving us. And we've had a discussion, I think, more than once as a group of superintendents in the state that by the time you are in 12th grade and you are within two or three days of graduating at the end of the year, that's not dramatically changing your life to be in school two or three days longer. Most likely, we have taught you what we are going to teach you by that point.
Are you suggesting we're losing focus?
We're all ready. They're ready to go. Project graduation, we have had a conversation about. Mr. Rankowitz is still working with them. There were already some logistical issues with them utilizing the middle school to do project graduation, so it was already being considered for not to utilize the middle school any longer. What I will say is, depending on how this really lands, that would solidify that the middle school may not be able to be utilized, for example. Because let's say for argument's sake, that the last day of school turns out to be June 18th, the day after graduation. We're not having project graduation all night, the night before, and then able to open up school for middle school on June 18th. So, you know, full disclosure, that may very well mean that it is moved somewhere else by setting the date. We don't have the answer to that right now, though.
And if school is the last day, if the last day of school is the 18th after graduation, we would have to move project graduation offsite completely?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we'll move to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Houston Moose, do I have a second?
Second.
David, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed extensions? I do want to acknowledge the donation that was made to Pine Grove from the PTO for the Makerspace. An $18,000 donation is quite impressive and I've seen pictures of this piece and it's astoundingly inspiring. So we're really fortunate to have had a PTO work so hard to bring that to our students. So I just wanted to acknowledge that without just simply voting on it. Now we can move to new business. Avon High School Course Proposal Recommendations, Dr. Rusak?
Okay, we have two different sets of course proposals. The first is on page 36 of your board packet. One of the new proposals is a civil rights movement course for social studies. This will be elective, a one semester course. And what we're trying to do with this is, again, build that elective in grades 10 through 12 for our social studies students. It also will provide that focus on the African-American struggle for equity, which also meets some of the new state legislation requiring all Connecticut schools to include African-American studies in the curriculum. So this is a start in that area. In world language, we're looking to add a Spanish 6, non-college level course. The students have requested this. They did request last year to have just a standard Spanish 6 course. And our feeling was by the time you got to Spanish 6, you know, probably should be moving toward the ECE or AP courses. And what we found out was that very few students actually moved on up into the ECE or honors course even with encouragement and support. So currently, we have 29 students that are interested in this course for 2021 that are in Spanish 5. And then the next elective is a percussion ensemble. This is from the music department. This is also a year-long course, like the world language course. And this will be for percussionists to have experience with concert and marching percussion instruments, also in support of the marching band. So we have a number of students that sign up to be percussionists, but there are only so many percussion parts, so everybody is rotating out for a few pieces. So this would allow students to have an ensemble specific to them, but then they would also play in the concert bands in addition to that. The next set of courses are on page 47 of your packet. The first three courses are for English 12, three additional ECE classes. So this is just additional choice for students. Obviously, we don't run every one of these courses every year or every semester. We rotate them through and it's really based on student interest, based on what they sign up for. We also want to round out two full years of ECE choice with three. We can't get the four quarters, four semesters in. And this year, we had students that wanted to take the ECE course, but the requirement is a year of English, 12th grade English. So they moved to the 12th grade honors courses for this year. So again, just more choice for our students in that area. The next course is an ECE American Studies course. This is an interdisciplinary course that's co-taught by an English and social studies teacher and builds on the 11th grade studies, both in American literature and U.S. history. This course used to be a heavy emphasis in the, I'm sorry, that's the next course. See, my course is up here. This course here will look at the American aesthetics and sensibilities, how they change over time. Again, an elective. The next elective is AP ECE European History. We're currently running AP European History. This will just add the ECE component and will not change any of the content of the course, but will provide students the opportunity to take the AP exam, take the course for ECE credit or in many cases, we have students that do both. The next course is the ECE Human Rights course. This course is an extension for students that want to further explore global human rights issues after taking Human Rights in a Modern World in 10th grade. This is a course I just started mentioning a second ago. We used to have the human rights as part of the kind of capstone experience at the high school, so this will bring that option back for students also as an elective. And social studies is currently our only core content department that doesn't have any ECE offerings and students have asked why. So we're trying to respond to their wishes. The theater has two course proposals. One is for improvisation for the real world. This is a new course. Students now are exposed to theater classes down in the middle school as part of their UA rotation. We started that a few years ago, so we want to start opening up a pathway when they come to the high school. So that would further expand our options for students. And then the last course, Intro to Theater, is just a change. It's currently running as a full-year course, but we have a number of students that can't take the course because it doesn't fit into the schedule. So we'd like to change that to a semester course and then they can pair it up with some of the other theater options if they want to continue on in those theater courses. So those are our course proposals.
I just sort of say, we do, all of these come through the CP, the Curriculum and Professional Practices, getting all of my CPDC, CPP. And they were recommended by us, but I do think it's important that we share these with the larger board so that you can all see them and if you have any questions, you know, to follow up with Donna. But they were passed through our committee first.
And through CPDC prior to the CPD?
Two committees, right.
And we are acting on them tonight, correct?
Yes, so that they can go into the course of studies.
So are there any questions regarding the courses? Jay?
I was going to move through. Jay has a question.
I just want to understand all the EC English classes. You said it's determined which ones are taught based on enrollment.
Enrollment.
Enrollment. So how many in total do we, are we going to have after these are added in the EC?
Usually, we run three different courses in the semester.
So students are going to have a choice of how many different ones to begin with and then we're bound to three?
Correct, by enrollment. So say we have a certain one, you know...
Do you know how many we have in total now?
How many sections?
Yes, EC English.
EC English, I believe we have six sections right now.
And then we're adding these?
Running, running right now.
We have, let me see, yes, six sections running right now. We have, let me see, yes, six sections running right now, but it's to rotate the courses through, Jay, because when we keep running the same courses, we have students that are juniors and seniors that we give the options of taking ECE courses, so it limits those options. So they may go all into the course of studies, and one, you know, 70 students enroll for, and another one, 10 enroll for. We just wouldn't run the one for 10, and students would pick a different selection.
So one thing, just to be clear, and I don't know if this is necessarily what you're asking, but generally speaking, what we need to do is have a course of studies that shows, any course that has been approved that may run, but it doesn't mean, we could have, let's say, for argument's sake, we have 10 ECE English classes that we have approved, we'd never run 10 at the same time.
Right, I understand that. So my question is more so, if we have nine or 10 EC English classes that students have the opportunity to enroll in, and, you know, we have 10 in each of them, someone's got to determine which ones are taught each year.
Correct. The department will look at the numbers and say, okay, this one isn't running. The teachers, and this has happened, you know, currently with some of the courses, the ECE courses in the English department, that the enrollment's not quite there, so they'll talk to kids about other choices to take. We just don't run the course for that semester. Because if the enrollment doesn't support it, we don't run the course, whether it's an ECE or any other course. Because we only have so many English teachers and sections, so we do it within that allotment.
So as we all know, the board's been very mindful about AP and ECE classes. I may already know the answer to this, but just want to ask about, you said social studies doesn't currently have an ECE class?
Correct.
But it has an AP slash ECE, or no?
No, the proposal is to add the ECE European History to that AP course that's currently running.
And then, the ECE Human Rights, there's no AP flavor of that? What's the, is it out there, or what's the rationale for that? Because one of the concerns, as you know, that we have is ensure we take, we have enough AP offerings.
This has been an interest area of students, that Human Rights piece, and the department did, you know, survey students as to what their interests were in, and this was one of those areas of interest that they would like to pursue further past the 10th grade required course.
I don't think there's an AP offered as an AP. There's no AP Human Rights. The Board isn't offering it.
Correct, none.
Any other questions?
Don't move to approve.
Okay, Houston moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason. All in favor, and move the courses through?
Aye.
Any opposed extensions? Pass the second animus.
Thank you. And I would just like to add, the CPP committee also moved some books forward for public review, which are down at Central Office, so I just want to announce that publicly and to the boards, and which you would like.
Thank you for that reminder.
For those courses, or for future other courses?
For current courses.
Thank you for mentioning that. This is important, given the conversation that we were having tonight.
Next, mission statement and district votes.
Well, can you do me a favor and change that, so we have one page at a time? Start with the first page, and I'll get up and speak to that. First, I would just like to go back, because I remember the other thing, by way of updates, at the previous board meeting, when we discussed preschool tuition, one of you had asked, and then we had a conversation about it as a whole, if we had a comparison for our tuition to some of the private tuition around us. So I have that, just wanted to share. So, thank you, Ms. Mashad, who pulled some of these out for us. So we have one, two, three, we have three local that have full day, and I'm only going to compare that, because as you know, ours is only full day at this point, so it's not useful to talk about what half-day tuitions would be somewhere else. So, three programs that offer a full day for three and/or four-year-olds. $348.25 a week is one. $322 a week is another, and $220 a week is a third. Actually, there's a fourth also, I'm sorry. Four and a half, $260 a week. And as a reminder, ours is $142.72 a week. So the next closest to ours would be $218 a week. So you know how we stack up in the programming that we're offering for all of these. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, so, I'll stand up a moment again. Now, we spoke about this already, in many ways, during the finance committee meeting, because as I already stated, the finance committee meeting, we can't do a budget when we don't revisit what our goals are for the coming years. This is on the screen, and I know, again, for the record, board members are very familiar with what's in front of us, and we spent a lot of time working on this together, just for months, but again, we finalized that about two weeks ago. But as you know, I have asked that we bring it back to the board again, for it to be read adopted, because we did adopt, we read adopted our mission statement last year, and strategic plan, the blueprint for excellence, that we were looking only one year ahead, as I was still transitioning with you and the district. And we have spent quite a bit of time going back over where we are, and data, and collecting information from all stakeholders, as you know, continuing to do at this thought exchange with the course of the graduate. But, all of that said, I want it to be very clear what we are engaging in together as a board and a district, so that we can continue to move the district forward, knowing that we are committed to the same goals. The mission, if you could just push that up a tiny bit for me, is exactly the same as what we read adopted last year, with the exception of the bottom piece of it. Thank you. Of the arrows, sorry. We added in this last section, so that every Avon Public School student is consistently challenged and empowered to. And the reason we added that in is because we had many conversations about a mission statement, and a statement of beliefs being great, because they'll drive our work. But at the end of the day, we have to all recognize that the reason that we do our work is for the benefit of students, and we wanted to directly tie this mission back to what, if we follow this mission, and truly believe this, and show that in our actions, what will we graduate students who are able to do? They will be able to communicate effectively, work collaboratively, think critically and creatively to solve challenging problems, advance their academic and personal goals, be self-directed, self-regulated, and resilient, as they live, learn, earn, and navigate their own pathway to success. As you know, a lot of this language is inherent in other pieces of the blueprint also, so they're tied together between mission, beliefs, and here. So this is the new section to the mission statement, pointing it out again, so that we remember the changes that we made. Any questions about that piece of it? As you know, I showed the draft of this at our convocation this year, and we have, so the entire district has seen this there, and also at follow-up meetings in the buildings that still continue, but also we've paused some pieces of the work to ensure that we had this process with the board, and continued that feedback loop, and whatever changes need to be made, as part of those discussions. So we have four focus areas: student learning, personal growth, and relationships; communications, partnerships. That's focus area three, and systems is focus area four. We spent a lot of time at our retreat talking primarily about focus area one, and then focus area two. As I said, when we were together doing the last pieces of this work as a board, those are the most important places for us to have that conversation, because we're a school district, this is what we're in the business of, is student learning, and also developing relationships with our students, our community and each other, and working closely with our faculty and staff and students for everyone's personal growth. So, I wanted to re-ear, I can see on the screen, even though my face is home, I'll be able to see all that it is, it will be on the website after we finish tonight. I will point out that, you see, the dates are changed to be what we discussed, to take us through 2023, which is really a piece going backward to where we started this work in 2018, if we had turned it into a five-year plan, which by doing this work, we have, because we have changed some of our focus areas and goals. So, just point out some of what I think is the key language in the focus areas and the goals. We are talking student learning, about having multiple student pathways that challenge our students. We are looking closely in goal one at building the instructional capacity of all who work in the district, so that we can challenge students with rigorous work, and also to provide feedback to continue growth, because that is how we grow, is through the continual cycle of feedback. We are looking very closely under goal two, at how we continue collecting, analyzing, interpreting the data and the evidence at all levels of the organization, because many times, I think, what we know we have seen happen is, we collect a lot of data, and sometimes, we may not use the lot of data that we collect. We are looking very closely at, over the next year-plus, at the assessments that we are utilizing. This is what we spoke about at board retreat, is an example of what we would be doing here, an assessment inventory. Are we measuring what we want to measure? Are we collecting the data that we want to collect? And are we acting on that data to further grow our curriculum and instruction and student learning? That's the most basic piece of what is in goal two. Under focus area two, personal growth and relationships, you know, we have spent a lot of time in the past year, working on, looking at our systems as a whole around social and emotional learning for students, but also developing positive relationships between faculty, staff, and students, vice versa, and our relationships with the community. As you know, you've heard me say it before, and I will say again, in many ways, I put my point out publicly, I think that all of our work, this is the foundation for, because we, how do we, how do we reach students? And to be able to help them to grow and to learn, we ensure that we have a positive learning environment, in every way that that means, from physical safety to emotional safety, number one. Number two, we need to do the same with our faculty and staff, and individuals who provide the one-on-one instruction for our students. So we have worked diligently, and will continue to do so with both of these goals, to develop relational capacity, student leadership skills, and also to give students the opportunities to acquire and apply that knowledge. So part of what we have to do is, as part of the learning process, give students the opportunity to practice those skills, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, creating things, being creative in their pathways, whether it's in the school buildings, through internships, and the like, having board reps with us, and the like. I will say that, as an update related to this, we are about to have a follow-up meeting with our district-wide committee related to social, emotional learning, and personal growth goals specifically, to review the draft of the standards that we have put together related to social, emotional learning, resiliency, collaboration, and pieces we just discussed, and how we will then integrate them into the curriculum, on the one hand, and on the other hand, look at the curriculums we have in place, and make sure that they are reflected on the same values from a systems standpoint. Under communication and partnerships, you've seen one major piece of this goal in the letter that I sent out to the entire community and to the school district, related to collecting information about our portrait of the graduate work. That sounds like a catchphrase, since you can look on many school district websites and see it, a vision of the graduate, a portion of the graduate, shiny leaflets that you might see put out. That's great. At some point, we too will publish a leaflet, if you will, that summarizes who the Avon Public Schools graduate is and should be. That's not the point of this. The point of it isn't to publish a fancy leaflet, it is to continue to guide this work from pre-K to 12 at every level, so that we all have a common understanding of what we are here to do. And seeking input from the community, board, faculty, staff, is a way to do that, to ensure that we stay current in what the skills and the knowledge that our students need to have is. So this is really a way to help this document be living and breathing, that we are ensuring we all have a common understanding of where we are headed at graduation. As you saw, I said in the letter, I think sometimes, we have to put that back in perspective for people, because we have this little tiny pre-K and kindergartners that come in, and we do what we do with them, but someday, sooner than later, they will walk out the other side with a diploma in their hand. What does the journey look like as a whole? And that's what we're looking to capture in our portrait of the graduate work, which is one of our main goals under communication and partnerships. Also, I will mention, our college and university partnerships is a piece here, because you know, we have one with the University of Connecticut already, which is how we are able to do our ECE, our early college experience courses. And also, we are working, as we've mentioned, in CPP Career and Professional Practices Committee, working on a partnership, we're in the early development stages, we're ready to the school, with TONCSIS, related to something we talked about earlier even tonight, around career and technical education. Under systems, this is where we spent less time, by the time we got to the retreat, because we spent a lot of time talking about what was most important, as I already said, the teaching inquiry. Number one, as you know, we've been very engaged in looking at a five-year technology, digital learning plan. Part of why we put that process on hold last year was actually to finish this as a five-year plan, and to finish our portion of the graduate. You have to know where you're going, and know what digital tools you need to incorporate, and what literacy looks like from a digital standpoint. So we are working back towards this end. We are talking about how to better use our Chromebooks, our one-to-one, we spent a lot of money over the years in that, as you know. We have to integrate, continue to integrate that into our teaching and learning with our students. We are also looking, for example, here, in how we utilize our virtual high school experience, where our students can take courses online. That's another piece, that's an on-the-ground part of this goal, around a digital learning plan. A long-range talent management plan, professional learning strategy. Number one, we've already put into place our PDEC, we call it short, we hate acronyms, so Professional Development Education Committee.
Evaluation.
Evaluation Committee, excuse me, it's late. Which is another side to our current curriculum and professional development committee. This is something that we have enacted after a lot of conversation with our faculty and staff about needs that we have, and ensuring that they are a part of the process for developing plans related to what they need for personal growth, insofar as meeting our goals. And that has already begun. We are making good progress there, but that's an on-the-ground piece of this particular goal related to professional learning. And a talent management plan, for example, you've heard me speak earlier tonight at the finance meeting about our CT, teach, teach CT. Better go home and get some more sleep tonight. Our teach CT online presence, so that we can continue to recruit staff, including minority and underrepresented staff in the district. So we are working closely with crack on some of those plans, as everyone is statewide. So we are working closely with crack on some of those plans, as everyone is statewide. And that is a goal that we will see rolling out over the next, we've already gone, but we will continue to see roll out over the next, I'd say, two, three years. And of course, number three, we continually need to review the district policies, our processes and procedures, so much we obviously talked about tonight. An example of how we're putting that goal into action, one piece of work that we have already done. We have created a drive that is shared amongst all of us as administrators of every current policy that we have. Why is that important? Because when you click online and you are taken to the CAVE website, there's a lag sometimes. We pass the policy, we submit it to CAVE, we sometimes have to wait for the old to come down, the new to go up. And in between, what happens? I have something to implement usually immediately in the district. One. Two, what we have now set up for ourselves is easier to search than that platform is. So that's just an example of an on-the-ground way we're trying to meet this goal. I think you also know that another piece is to continually revisit our policies to ensure that they are broad-brush policies, because they need to be able to be applied as such when the law changes, and also that when the law changes, we revisit them and make the necessary changes. I've been working very closely with the policy committee to be able to do that. Someday, we're going to catch up. Getting there. Starting to get on, yeah, something like that. So honestly, teaching and learning being the most important thing that we do. I try to live, as a superintendent, I try to live there all of the time. I think if you look at this strategic plan, you can probably make a guess of where I often live, regardless of where I want to live. I often live in goal number three. Because to be able to enact all of these wonderful ideas and innovations that we were talking about, I have to continually revisit the systems, the processes, and the procedures that are in place and how we utilize our resources. So if you look at even the way that I did the budget meeting with you tonight.
Sorry.
That would be bad. That would be bad.
Work is counting.
I could use a couple days off, but not right now.
Almost there.
We don't need that added on insurance, I would never make that on the plane. Anyway, our, our budget meeting tonight, you can see why I approach that the way that I do. Because we're talking about the deployment of district resources. That's all of our district resources. It's not just where we can pinpoint the dollars and cents. What are we doing to ensure that we can live by these four areas and the goals inherently? Finished by saying, our school administrators have done a tremendous job in helping to collect what we needed to put this together and to continue to roll it out. They've spent countless hours with me and also central office administrators and on their own, making sure that we've captured the work that needs to be done as an entire district. So as, just a blanket statement, I'll say for us all to remember that the district plan needs to be broad enough, as this is, to incorporate all of the individual goals, school goals that need to go into it. So we don't write goals that are what I often refer to as on the dance floor. We write goals that are on the balcony. We don't write goals that are under the microscope for the district. Under the microscope, we write them from the scientist's point of view before they ever look into the microscope. So I think that we have done a great job and I'm grateful to you as board members for working as much as you have with me and us to make sure that we could articulate this important work. And I'll stop there and say, I know we've talked about this a lot already prior to this meeting, because we were in a different public venue when we did that. Say, what questions do you have still? Or other things that you think that I need to address, maybe even that we did in a prior previous meeting, but didn't say here that you think for the benefit of the public, that would be helpful.
Concern on a small scale, just to open the dialogue. Just so what struck me, and we have technology experts here, I could speak to this more, but the technology plan, the digital learning plan, five years, the current pace of technological change, that seems like maybe too wide a window. Just an observation.
Yeah.
The pace that.
Things will be happening in five years if we can't even have a plan today, because we don't know.
That's absolutely right. I think what we have to be thinking about though, and there's still a big picture piece to think about, particularly related to the acquisition of our technology, because we need to be forward-thinking and if, if the Chromebook is about to become out of date, we have to start thinking about five years from now, maybe we're not going to use Chromebooks anymore, and we should stop entering into these leases, right? So I hear what you're saying, you're absolutely right. I think we do still have to start projecting long range though from a budgetary, if nothing else, perspective so that we have a sense of where we're headed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
I just want to say thank you. It's great to hear the collaboration that happened district-wide. I think that is very reassuring for parents and students and hopefully staff that this is a collaborative kind of document and a guiding document. I, I think for myself, what I'm going to look to do over the next, the next year as this kind of unfolds is to really understand how it does meet the student in real life. Because I think sometimes you get so much data, and as a layperson, I, the data is, I know how valuable it is to what you do, but I think it's very important for me to understand how this impacts children where they live. And I look forward to kind of touching on that throughout the year as this unfolds and we go through it.
Thank you. Alvin ate all those lemon heads. I could have used one.
Thank you, Jackie. And I think that, that comes through us providing some real-life examples and updates of where we are in the work, here publicly and also in some of our other meetings. So thank you for bringing that up again.
So what's the call of the question you want us to do? If I may.
I would like you to.
I guess you approve it?
Yes, I'd like you to make a motion to re-approve the plan that we have put together so that we can continue to move the organization forward.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Laura, that was you who's second, right?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm so croaky.
No. Passes unanimously. Thank you. I think this really does summarize so many of the conversations that we've had together and I appreciate how eloquently you've managed to display this for public consumption. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. I should, let me just mention this on the same note. This is for public consumption, because even though there's a lot here, it's two pages. And if you truly expect to be able to live by this as a school district and have people that need to understand where you're headed, you don't want a 60-page document as a strategic plan. Do I have documents that look more like that, that have more clear outlined steps? Yes, to our principals, yes, to our teachers, yes. But this is the public document, because it is the overarching view of everyone should understand, everyone who works there and everyone who is a part of this community should understand where the school district is headed. And this was generated for that, to be clear. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. So we already had the benefit of hearing your input regarding the graduation date for 2020. Was there any more questions or commentary on that? Are we ready to move on June 17th being our date?
Do you need an motion?
Yes.
Does somebody?
So moved.
Houston moved, so I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tensions passes unanimously. Great, thank you. Okay, communication from board members?
I have one item.
David?
Every so often, I hear from parents and students. And one issue that was brought up was regarding the high school policy regarding personal electronic devices. It seems as if some of the students were using their personal electronic devices in conjunction with phone apps to track their assignments and due dates and things of that sort. And so when the new phone policy started and all the phones started getting corralled into phone jail in classes, the students haven't figured out a way to work around that just yet, because they only have a few minutes between classes and that's not enough time to put their assignments into an electronic tracking device. When they get out of high school, the minute they do that and they head off to college, they're going to be using something like this, the way all the rest of us use it in the real world to track our calendars and our assignments and things that are due. So I told these people that my role on the board isn't enough to get them what they want, simply that the policy is in place and politically we're probably not going to intervene a year or two, review it or look at it or anything of the sort. But I was going to point out some of the irony here. At the bottom of page 73, we talk about students being consistently challenged and empowered to, and the last item is to be self-directed, self-regulated, and resilient as they live, learn, and navigate their own pathway to success. Well, the way we do that, once they get out of school, is this, because we're all doing it. I counted 10 of these on the tops of the table right here. I probably didn't get them all. So anyway, I realize the policy in place also solves a problem in that we don't have students Facebooking their way through class when they shouldn't be, and that sort. And the way that's controlled in the real world is a little bit different. If my boss caught me Facebooking all day at work, it would be what we call a career-shortened moment. We don't have those options with students, so they're here regardless. So I realize that there's two sides to the issue and that it'll be a challenge to review this in the future, but the, it'll, there'll be a time when we have to revisit the policy because the nature of these electronic devices is always changing anyway. So that's all I have for now.
May I through the chair? Just because I think it's important to, to respond to that. Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Cabal, because that's a reasonable concern. I would think that our, our students may have, what I will say is this though, and I'm glad that Mr. Rengels happened to be here tonight to hear it and to hear you say this. We did not enact a policy as a, as a board or as a district that they could not have with phones with them. We were purposeful actually in doing that as an example of sometimes it goes against what we're trying to do to enact a, a policy.
Right.
Because what we have been doing is looking at the way they are used at the school, asking that, and this has come out of the high school as a, as a recommendation, asking that they not be out when students are supposed to be doing something else. So they're supposed to be learning, they're supposed to be engaged in something, they're not distracted by the technology. And so the, the phone jail idea, for example, is a way to, for anybody who doesn't know what we're talking about, it's the, we have some of the door slots that were purchased that they could put them in. They can also just put them away. They don't necessarily have to put them in these slots. It's about keeping them on task. So what I would say is that what we expect is that our teachers have the discretion to do what they need to do in the classroom. In other words, if I am a teacher and I don't want you to have your cellphone with you at all times while we're trying to engage in this lesson, I might also, though, very well say, you know what? I'm going to have to give you the assignment, don't you want to put it in your technology? Go ahead and get it out and do that. I don't think that's beyond possibilities of happening. Probably happens in some places, I'm going to assume, at the high school already. So I, what I'll say to you is thank you for bringing it up. I just wanted to reiterate that we are managing that, the use of technology at the high school in an attempt to do what makes sense for students.
Right, I think the practice will mature over time. We'll find a way to accommodate that, that special case.
Thank you. Laura?
So we did have a pretty thorough discussion about this and Mr. Rengels did come and present to us, because you're right. The issue is whether or not to enact actually a policy around this issue, which is a national conversation right now around the use of personal electronic devices, not excluding Apple Watches, phones, and other technologies that probably are yet even limited to classes, school boxes, things like this. This is blackberry, thank you.
And this one's blackberry.
So this is not unique to Avon and this is something that we are looking at. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. In fact, they will need to solve our deal with some of our students and they need to figure out the balance.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comment, Houston?
Probably shows up with strange things. Just a question for the superintendent. In light of the fact we have non-student foreign nationals in our database, would GDPR affect us or regulate us? Is there data protection regulation? Something to think about. You probably don't know off the top of your head. And then a second comment is I still remain very interested in having enrichment and I fully appreciate the education speak. You cannot maximize everything for everybody all at once on everything, because it's just not mathematically possible. It would be awfully nice, since you were going to raise it with the curriculum committee last time in response to my question at the time, if we could have a report by the next meeting as to what we're going to do in terms of enrichment for special and whatever you want to call them. So it would be nice if we could have some kind of report so we know somewhere we're going. And I understand I'm probably pushing you faster than you want to go, but in light of my conversation with last time at the meeting, I thought it was appropriate to raise this issue again.
I, I'll wait because I assume I think.
Yeah, just to follow up. So I was there at that curriculum and professional practices committee and I want to thank the chair and the administrators for including this topic on the, on the agenda. So we spent a good amount of time talking about it. So I think I'm just following up on what you're saying. So what we heard at six o'clock, at the six o'clock meeting, is that we have a proposal where if someone's identified, then we will set up a, a meeting with teachers, parents, administrators, the enrichment coordinator, and come up with a plan for that student. That's, I think, the goal. I happen to be blessed to live in a neighborhood with a few very thoughtful educators who have tremendous insights about education. So I happened to speak to one of these great resources who brought up to my attention this MathQuest program that Wes Harper does. So our administrators looked into that and that was one option that we talked about. I think specifically to that one, we thought it wasn't the right fit for Avon for a couple of reasons that we brought up.
Correct.
But I think currently, so I think maybe to Houston's point, can we, maybe by next meeting, think about the specifics of what we do with that plan, right? Because it seems pretty open-ended. So if we say, okay, we'll have a plan for that student who's identified, well, what that looks like could be pretty wide open, right? Pretty open-ended. So maybe if we look at other towns that provide something that's effective, that works, maybe like MathQuest, maybe like something else, we can already be a leg up on saying, okay, here are some opportunities that we can implement for these students versus start from scratch, what do we do now, what are the plans? Is that maybe a little bit?
I would say yes. And it's not intended to tell the superintendent how to do it. I'm certainly saying, come up with a proposal. But if I don't push it, I'm not sure what's going to happen. So I want to make sure that, I understand you said, we aren't yet doing this with fidelity where we're coming up with a plan and I'm still in that direction. But I'd like to have a plan, to implement a plan. I want to be able to say that this is the direction that we're heading.
And I'm not saying just to simply base from somewhere else, because I know we have very innovative, thoughtful leaders in our, in our school. So we can, and I always advocate for us moving ahead of everyone else too, if we can, so.
So you want to know what version one looks like?
Yes.
So I don't want to be the dead horse tonight, given what, what time it is and what we still have left to do. I, I think all, save for the time being, is that we talked about that at great length at curriculum and professional practices. We talked about it again at our board retreat. I spoke to it again tonight at the finance committee meeting. And so piecing, piecing all those together into, into a few statements. I, I just want to be clear, because now we're in, we're in another meeting, for the record to show really more than I. really more than anything else, because some of the conversations we've already had outside of this forum, but in other forums. Number one, I did not bring an actual proposal tonight because, as I mentioned earlier, that wouldn't be... This wouldn't be the place for it, because we started a conversation in the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee, and what we talked about was bringing it back there. I spoke about it tonight in regards to the budget because knowing some of what I know we will recommend already as a result of these conversations, I know there's a budgetary impact. So, specifically to speak to the identification process, and if nothing else... So, if you were to ask me right now, Bridget, tell us in one sentence what your plan for talented and gifted is, my plan right now would be that we properly identify and then notify. Properly identify the students, give them all an opportunity to be properly identified, and notify their parents and their teachers of the same. Right now, at its base level, that is where we are, because as you heard me say earlier, I think we have a process, a foundation that needs to be revisited. So, that's number one. Number two, I hear...
Good, but just throwing it sort of back on your eye, I'm concerned because you're in the process of putting together a budget now for next year.
Do we need more things?
Do we need more things?
Yes.
Because if we don't get it into next year's budget, it's near action.
I understand. Right. So, to go back to what we talked about at Curriculum and Professional Practices, and again tonight, we have... First of all, we already hired an enrichment coach. So, from a person's standpoint, have that person in place, how the person is utilized, we need to be reworked a bit. That's part of the conversation that we're having so that we can make that work better. One. Two, we have much of what we have, so to your point, Bogdan or Houston, about a plan for a student. To be clear, what we talked about already was much of what we are already doing is exactly what we will continue to do. It's how we communicate it and ensure that it is what's meeting the needs. So, I would say that that is something open-ended, Bogdan, I guess, to that point, because we're talking about differentiating for students at that end of the continuum, and it will look different. That isn't going to be an exact... For some students, it's going to be... We talked about this earlier. They're incredibly gifted and talented, in math in particular. We are going to work with the students about what that looks like. Some it will be both English Language Arts and what does that look like. Some it may be just Language Arts or the sciences or what have you. And I think that we have to have the flexibility to develop experiences and plans and pass forward, that's where we come back to the pathways here, for individual students. And the difference here that we're talking about in scale is, generally speaking, we hover between three and four percent of our students that would be identified as talented and gifted. At any given moment, that could be ninety students across the entire district. The highest they've seen, I think, is one hundred and twenty-eight students. So, it's doable to talk about it in terms of what are we doing for these three third graders, these five, sixth graders. It is a problem of scale. So, I'm not disagreeing with you about plan for moving forward. I'm saying that right now, budgetarily, my recommendation is on the identification process and to look back at how we utilize the funds we already have in our enrichment lines and for our... They're designated in some ways for other pieces. So, for example, math counts, our maker spaces, our... Oh, goodness, that comes to me right now. I'm missing one of them, but she was listening to Jeff. Some of those other programs that we spoke about, that we are going to need to continue and to firm up what that matching of students' needs to those things are, because we don't want to just throw it at a dark board. Hey, we've got all of these things we can offer you. We need to be more purposeful, which I think is what you're asking me, too. And you will definitely hear more about that. I want to do it through the right channels and come back around.
Understood, but it's our role as the Queen in the United Kingdom to warn, to admonish, to encourage.
Understood.
Therefore, that's what we're doing.
Understood.
One other question I would ask, which is actually, for us, a relatively straightforward question, but is not to the public. Can you advise as to the status of Chinese?
So, we did not speak about that tonight in the budget piece, for example. I just want to be clear about that. We have put together the numbers so that we can look, project forward what it looks like, students moving forward. We, as you know, entered into a memorandum of understanding with our teachers' union in the previous year to be able to keep the program going, where we hire an individual who is from outside of our teachers' union that we secure through the Confucius Institute, which is what we have been doing for years, but we needed to formalize the agreement. We do not currently have another agreement with our education association for the upcoming year. That does not mean I expect we will or will not have one. We've begun the conversations about it. We also wanted to look at the numbers so that we... Of students who are currently taking the courses so that we would have a good sense of, from a staffing perspective, what that would look like. So, we're in the process of that right now, and I think by the time we are at our next budget meeting, we can have that conversation again. The salary through the Confucius Institute, if I remember correctly, from a budgetary standpoint, is somewhere around thirty-one thousand, thirty-five thousand?
Around thirty-five.
Thirty-five per teacher?
Yes, per teacher. We would only need one next year.
We would only need one next year if we needed...
One additional?
No, one total.
So, we're going to cut the Chinese program again? I just want to be clear on that.
No.
Yes.
Well...
Right.
For who's moving forward?
Well, we've had this conversation, right? My student entered this program, got... Was told was going to get Chinese K through twelve. Was eliminated in fourth grade, went to fifth grade. We were told, "Oh, he'll get it in sixth grade," and now he's not going to get it in sixth grade, correct? Because we had three teachers, then two teachers, and now one teacher. And the rationale last year was we got rid of two teachers because Confucius could not come up with two.
Right. Thank you.
And because we've invested a lot of time and effort into the Chinese program, and what we've done is we've continued to cut back. So, I question, we've spent all this money over all these years on this Chinese program to only cut it. You talk about students enrolling, but we have cut the main source of students enrolling into that, and I question how we've spent the overall money and our commitment to providing that experience to our students. But I'll be more happy to talk about it when we get to the budget meeting.
No, so to be clear, that's why I said we have to have this conversation at another time so that we can make a determination whether or not we would request more than the one. The one would keep it the way we had projected it forward to your... We would need more than one teacher from them. Currently, I'm not certain we would be able to get that additional teacher. We actually almost lost one in the last few weeks. It has been incredibly difficult, as we talked about last year. I think it's only gotten more so for the Confucius Institute to recruit individuals to come to the United States to work with them to do this program. So, again, I think as a budget conversation, Jeff, to your point, and our priorities, we'll be having a conversation exactly the same as we had last year. Are we going to look at making this a full-time position in Avon Public Schools and taking that into our budget from that standpoint of more than likely of... Again, we're ahead of ourselves, but I just want to respond because we're talking about it tonight, a ninety thousand plus dollar a year for one-person salary. We have to make that determination if that's what we want to do, and find a person, which still might pose a challenge to find someone certified, or are we going to continue down the path we've already started? And I think we have to have that conversation and determine what the priority is.
But that goes to the larger issue, what does life look like after Confucius, because it seems as if they're not able to supply us with the demand that we would have to run the program the way we'd like to run it. And it would be great if they could supply that number of teachers, but we've gone from three to two, possibly to one, and at that point, they're basically telling us that we're on our own. So, do we acknowledge that and move forward, and that'll be a discussion we're going to have to have, as you said.
And I just want to clarify...
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure there's nothing that I said. Dr. Musa?
Just want to clarify back to the point we're making, understand your perspective, and as far as being the dead horse, I don't necessarily think that's the analogy.
No, I meant me, I didn't want to do it.
Yeah, well, I think it's not the same horse, taking that next step forward, logical step forward. And the urgency I have is, we know the home for this would be the curriculum committee, and that is meeting in February. So, by then, this dead horse would probably be out of the barn, so we have to kind of move now. This is the only time this horse comes out.
From a budgetary perspective, yes. I understand.
So, that was my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have three things, really quick. I promise to be...
I still have my second thing.
Number one, I just want to say the vast array of things we've spoken about tonight just, I think, goes a shorter than what a challenge this is. I mean, we all have to come from different places, hearing different things at Avon, whether it's the administration, the board, and we really, we're Board of Education, think about the things we talked about tonight, you know, soup to nuts, really. So, with that in mind, two things that I wanted to bring up here at the end that I took out of this meeting, I don't think we should walk away from here forgetting about the presentation that the first leg gave us. They brought up some good points, and I think, look, if that much food is getting dumped into a garbage can or wasted, we should take a look at it. So, that's number one. Maybe number two. But anyways, my last point would be we spent a lot of time tonight on different issues, talking about policy. You actually pretty much ended there on your presentation blueprint. As far as I'm concerned, our job as a board is to set policy. Policies need to be followed. If they're not being followed, I'm concerned. If we as a board don't like the way things are going, we should set policies. So, I just think we should keep that in mind as we work going forward. There are ways to accomplish our goals using policy, and that really, I think, we should focus on that and rely on you to make sure our policies are being implemented, which everything I heard tonight makes me think you're doing a very good job, making sure the policies are being followed and remedying problems, but policies really, this whole job lies in my mind.
For the board, yes. Thank you.
And I guess that...
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, yes. So, can I pose a brief question, please? So, as the board has already discussed prior about gifted programs, et cetera, and they've cited... You guys have cited programs such as math counts, which are targeted towards the middle school. However, towards the high school end of that, for instance, for calculus, in my calculus class, about a third of the class is actually not seniors. And Calculus BC is a class designed to be at the end of your math program at the high school. So, as such, after these students have taken the calculus class, they really don't have anything past that. We have some classes, such as AP Statistics. Many of these students have already taken that. There's also half semester or half-year classes, such as ECE discrete math, which many people will complete in half a sem... Or half a year. So, along with Focus Area Three outlined under the blueprints for excellence, Goal Two says that the board will seek to establish formal partnerships with post-secondary institutions, and as you've mentioned, that includes TONCS, which you cited for jobs training, vocational training, et cetera. So, my question is, will this be extended to dual enrollment for, like, say, math or, like, Language Arts? Good question.
So, that's a good question, and some of that, to my point, so the TONCS program right now has a math component, and it's not vocational. So, I want to be clear, and I think I spoke some more to that in the finance committee meeting before you were here. When we're talking in the current version of career and technical education, it's the big umbrella of skills related to 21st century skills and jobs and so forth that usually is intertwined with some portion of college, whether that is a four-year degree or it is a doctoral degree. So, that partnership with TONCS is more like what you're talking about, one. Two, our partnership with UConn, for all intents purposes, those ECE courses are dual enrollment because what you are getting are credits from the University of Connecticut. Are we looking for others? Yes, to answer your question in the short version. And I'm glad you brought up the ECE discrete math. Couldn't mention this under my update, but I did not. We had a conversation in our Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee related to an ECE course that would have been, could, I should say, would be, if we move it forward, the second half of the year after, to coincide with discrete math. So, we have had a conversation about there being a hole there, and I'm glad you brought that up tonight because I think we need to revisit it to potentially approve and move forward at another meeting. Thank you.
And I did think at some point, I think we had some collaboration, college level classes that we could take outside of TONCS, I'm hoping I take that out of mine. So, my second point has to do, kind of following up on what Jason said, is it's also our role to help with a vision, not just a policy. So, that vision has to reflect what our constituents value and what we think we represent for them, and it still ties into our mission. So, I think for our students to have that personal integrity and social responsibility, and two of the members of the public spoke today about this, I think they have to move beyond sort of a narrow lens. If you get all your information from a narrow lens or from one perspective, you're going to have a narrow mindset. So, this also incorporates the climate that a member of the public spoke about, and I think it's especially timely because we're heading into a potentially very heated political season with a campaign coming up and all the things that come along with that. So, as far as what we can do on the board, what the administrators can do to help us get at some of those challenges that we're facing, why the climate is the way it is, and maybe even the new sources that our students are exposed to, what are some steps we can take?
Before... I think that's such a huge question for her to answer now.
It's a lot to unpack, yeah.
Do you want to answer that, though?
I want to...
I actually just want to speak to the idea of climate, and I respect very much the public that come to speak here, and I think that all of these opinions have to be taken weight seriously and considered thoughtfully. But I, too, am a member of the public, and my child attends here, and my other two students attended here, and found the climate to be welcoming, politically expressive. Each of my children have come home with totally different views, so I'm very appreciative of what they've been exposed to. I appreciate that the teachers are walking a very, very gradual line, and I feel for them every day, but I really don't want to leave this meeting thinking that, wow, we really have... I can say for myself, I'm very grateful for the climate that is in this school and that they're working very, very hard to be as fair and as amenable to all kinds of learning styles as they can. And I don't personally know that we can discuss that big of a question at night, very... That's just my personal opinion.
But I'd like to put it in our minds somehow on our agenda, because it's not just anecdotal. It's not... This is not the first I've heard of it. Years before I was on the board, before I was coming to this, I've heard a lot of...
But there are varying opinions on this, Bobby. There are varying opinions on it.
There are, but I think we should have an inclusive environment that doesn't alienate anybody.
Of course, me, too.
All right. Any other comments from board members? Jason, three more?
No.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so we move to communications from the public. If anyone who remains with us would like to speak, Carol, come on forward. Just say your full name for the record, please.
Carol Shabinsky. And I was just wanting to clarify something a little bit for the record with my... I'm one of the co-presidents for the high school PTO with respect to Project RAD. I think it's great that we set a date, and people are already working very hard for something that happens in June, and I want to say, like, maybe four years ago, five years ago, my current junior was in the middle school, and the middle school lost power, and they had to go for an extra day after graduation. And Project RAD was still at the middle school, and they had a lot of volunteers, and the building was, like, ready to go and spotless by five or six in the morning after the party. So, just, I know that probably predates some of you guys who are here on the board, and I don't know if that's going to be an issue this year, and I know our committee is working very hard and talking to Mr. Rinkowitz about some side options, but I know the high school is one of the strong leading contenders for having the party, and I think there has to be some open minds and flexibility that the committee would be able to pull off, even if kids are coming to school here the next day. So, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? Dr. Lewis?
Hi, I'm Patrick Lewis. Still, I'm going to be brief. I'm just going to comment on the... I want to thank Mr. Afrika for what he said, and I want to say that I certainly am not alone. There are a number of people who have those concerns. You sit in a very powerful position, Ms. Glee. You sit in a very powerful position, Ms. Gleeah. And if you recall, when you were elected, there was essentially a vote of no confidence in this board. And so I would strongly encourage you to consider your constituents. I have been very mindful of not escalating, but there are a number of people with substantial issues. It is not okay. You complain about technology with our students and then layer CNN and dumb down your classroom. Why? Why are we doing that? Why aren't we having intelligent humans, which our teachers are, teach our students? Why, why are we politicizing everything? Why does a student have to read a textbook with, with profanity? Why does day rape have to be shown in an English class to espouse the Me Too movement? It's not okay. And Dr., you alerted earlier, the right to privacy is incredibly important. It was first written about in 1890 by Brandeis and he articulated it as the right to be left alone. This is the foundation for the right to abortion and also for birth control. People have the right, even minor children, to hold beliefs, religious beliefs, believes in who they are. They have the right to come to school and not be told, as a child was told last year, that's a white attitude. This is a pattern of behavior. Your teachers are outstanding. Let's empower them to teach their subject. I don't need people to tell my children how to vote, how to worship, who to have sex with. I don't care. Teach your topic. Teach it well, you're gifted. But I absolutely challenge you and what you ask for a solution, Ms. Hsu, I have one. How about an open 365 degree evaluation where every child in your school is asked open-ended questions about their experience with discrimination and harassment and every single parent is also asked anonymously? Now, to the superintendent, I'd say I would never approve that if I were you because I've been an administrator too, but I will throw down and say the day you give that out and you get no response, that you sit, sir, and say, oh, our job is to write policy. You don't even enforce the policies you've written. Holy Toledo, you're writing more policies, you can't even follow the policies you've written. My goodness, that's all I have to say, but thank you, Mr. Afrika. And I am here to tell you, when I came to speak out at this board, people were like, your kids will be retaliated against. Aren't you afraid? I, absolutely. And I'm not afraid because my mother was in World War II, she was in the resistance of the north of France. This is small potatoes to me. But people are afraid. They are afraid. You sit in very powerful positions and it was a vote of no confidence before you're elected. It takes a lot to get there, but for you to say, I love, the people at the school, I love them, my children learn a ton, it's a wonderful school, there isn't violence, there's nothing like that. I hear that. But that people are coming to school and being shown C N A and being forced to watch movies with day rape drug use, being told, being forced to read books with profanity, it's odd. And the point made earlier, absolutely when you opt out, there's shaming, there's bullying, there's shunning, absolutely that happens. Absolutely. And so the thing is, if you're going to prevent, if you're going to present material that's so provocative, do it on the side, have it as an opt-in. Have your mainstream, have it for the gifted and talented, have it for whoever. But your mainstream curriculum should not have 400 profane words in 500 pages. That's odd. It's unnecessary. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Anyone else? All right, we are-
I want to go into executive session.
Yep, am I?
We'll win, Bobby.
Okay, I'm going to invite in Dr. Carnapola, Ms. Mashad, and Mr. Medic. I will ask the audience, you can excuse yourselves, it will take a five-minute rest to allow the camera man to break down as well. Do I have a second on that? All right, David Second's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close of sentence, okay.